Good evening, everyone. Been awhile since we've been here. Hope everybody had a nice spring break. Thank you for being here in person and for those of us who are watching live streaming. I will now ask the Board Secretary to take role and establish a quorum for the record.
Member Benitez.
Present.
President Craighead.
Here.
Member Lopez.
Present.
Member Miller.
Here.
And Member Otto is absent. Student Member Lopez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Now we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask Frania to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
Our flag is a flag of allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For those of you present in the room, the Board appreciates and supports community input at our meetings. During the meeting, there will be time for the public to comment on matters on the agenda and matters not on the agenda. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms hereby where the Board Secretary is sitting. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form now indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda and the Board took action on the following items. Regarding item 3.1, confidential student matters pursuant to California Education Code 35146, the Board voted to expel a student ID number 7352. In compliance with Education Code Sections 48915A1 and A2, the Board also voted to expel a student ID number 1764 pursuant to Education Code Section 48915C3. Both students are recommended to be considered for suspended expulsion with an opportunity to attend another school within the district. And both students will be eligible to apply for readmission or will, sorry, both students will not be eligible to apply for readmission until after January 26, 2024. The Board vote was 4-0 on both matters with Mr. Otto absent. In item 3.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, the Board voted 4-0 with Mr. Otto absent to approve final settlement agreement and general release in OAH case number 2022120350, providing consideration, accommodations, and a general release. In item 3.3, the Board voted 4-0 with Mr. Otto absent to appoint Yvonne Castro-Joseph as an Educare mentoring supervisor. Congratulations to Ms. Yvonne Castro-Joseph. And regarding item 3.9, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, the Board voted 4-0 with Mr. Otto absent to approve two settlement agreements regarding the case numbers listed on the agenda. Adoption of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? If not, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The agenda is adopted. And now, it is my honor to introduce our student from CAMHS, Samuel Agbo? Is that it? Can you help me, please? But I invite you to the podium, and the first thing you're going to do is correct my pronunciation of your name. So please, please join us at the podium and, and help me out.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Samuel Agbo, and I'm the current Senior Class President representing CAMHS and filling in for our Associate Student Body President Isabel Lau. I'd like to first begin by saying that I'm honored and humbled to speak on behalf of my school and give you all a glimpse into what we've been able to accomplish and pursue in this latter portion of the school year. Things that are being cemented in our school's history and also things that'll establish outlooks that'll transform our school's future. In our last student report, we spoke about the building blocks, the onboarding of new students, new ideas, and new directions. And at CAMHS, I find that we continue to introduce the new and the best and go above and beyond to nurture a vibrant student body into developing their own building blocks and using their tools they gain inside the classroom to shape their futures outside the classroom. And right now, those building blocks are coming in the form of hundreds of multicolored posters plastered across campus, waves of green, blue, red, and purple class colors, each with a distinct design and purpose, both small and large, both torn and intact. What I'm referring to is our Spirit Week, which was just last week. As one of our biggest events, only occurring twice every school year, Spirit Week is an opportunity to foster individual class morale and communion while also giving our friendly competitive culture a new host and an opportunity to shine. As per usual, we had our dash-ups throughout the week, ranging from 2,000 themed outfits to family reunion outfits. And we had different games held at our quad leading up to Friday, our big spirit rally. On Spirit Rally Day, student creativity was currency. Classes were ranked according to how well they were able to cover campus in their colors, how spirited they were collectively, and how they performed in their own choreographed dances and lip sync performances. Ultimately, it was the senior class that took home our second and last Spirit Rally victory, and as we speak, I'm sure my class is celebrating. But beyond last week, CAMHS' spirit takes on different forms, all attesting to LBUSD excellence that I'm going to continue sharing with you all today. We have had two successful blood drives held on our campus through collaboration with the American Red Cross. We've had canned food drives, clothing drives, and so much more. And the best part of all of this is that these efforts are, for the most part, student-driven. CAMHS is a breeding ground for student leaders, activists that strive to create realities that are sustainable for everyone, but in the process also aim to understand each other. In March, we had our multicultural fair, where we put diversity on the big stage, where all of our demographics on campus are seen and acknowledged, and where all of our students are educated and empowered to be who they are authentically and embrace what background or backgrounds they represent. Also in March, our dance team put on an amazing performance held at Jordan High, where a year's work of group coordination and imagination were coded into several hours of incredible art. And our sports teams follow suit. We have our boys tennis team playing their last league match tomorrow. We have several swimmers on our boys and girls swim team on their way to CIF. And our boys volleyball team is going strong still, winning their games and heading to championships. And today, they're having their senior night. And something especially exciting is that for the first time in our history, CAMHS' very own First Robotics Competition Team, or FRC Team for short, recently won the LA Regional Competition as a first-seat Alliance captain, going undefeated in qualifications, winning the Industrial Design Award, and one of our students even winning the Dean's List Award. They are now heading to the World's Competition in Houston, and as a school, we are setting them off with confidence that they'll show us what we're made of. Our other robotics team, VEX, has also made impressive strides, heading to state competitions after winning the Excellence Award and the Tournament Innovate Award presented by the Society of Women's Engineers. Just as the FRC Team demonstrates that it's not too late for a change, we embody that same mindset, sorry, mindset, in our very own mascot. The Rebel has been a symbol of our legacy since our school was founded in 1990, but equally, it has served as a source of contention because of its historical ties. But through a newly established rebranding committee in our ASB, it was a year-long effort to assess student views on the mascot and pull student ideas in order to inform the selection of an entirely new mascot. And I'm happy to report, moving forward, CAMHS will be known as the Coyotes. Students incoming next fall will get to experience all of what I described and so much more. In fact, we are having our admitted students day coming up on April 29th, where we will be welcoming them and getting them acquainted with what will be their next four years. On the other hand, we seniors are taking our experiences to our respective colleges or whatever it is that's next for us. We've had a successful college application season with many students who I've gotten in and I've committed to, schools like CSULB here in Long Beach, prominent public universities like UCLA and UC Berkeley, and even private universities such as Stanford, Princeton, Johns Hopkins, Caltech, and so much more. With the help of our amazing counselors, Ms. Agolto, Ms. Shubb, and Ms. Carla, we've been able to realize our potential and prep ourselves for what's ahead. So Coyotes, if you're watching, have faith in ASB that our events will continue to alleviate you in the midst of academic chaos. My classmates, have faith in me and the Board that we will end this year strong and that our incoming end will just be the beginnings to getting stronger. And the district, have faith in the school, but also the students, because just as you aim to support our personal and intellectual success, we aim to bring it full circle. So all together, I hope my report has shown you that our legacy is one of our outdoings, not outdoing others, but outdoing our old selves. The school year has had its highs and lows, but whether we sink or swim, rise or fall, we meet our fate together. And we hope the district will continue supporting us in these endeavors, one building block at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to pass it to you. Samuel. Thank you, Samuel. Do you have supporters here, either from your family, from school?
I'm sure there's people like admin from my school that are probably watching, so those are my supporters and also my family back home.
Okay, and all of us in the room, that goes without saying. And we love hearing about what's happening at CAMHS, we love hearing from you. You talked about some schools that CAMHS students are interested in going to. What schools are you interested in going to?
I've not yet made any official commitments. I'm still weighing my options from the schools that have it in me. I can say there is a selection that I have of my top choices, and I'm just looking at what can be the good balance between what they can provide me academically and also financially, and that's how I'll inform my decision, which I'll hopefully make very soon.
And how about a little name dropping? How about, what are your, what are your top schools?
Okay, so my top two choices right now are Stanford and Yale with a focus in neuroscience.
Oh, wow.
Hard, hard choice to make there with your top two schools. You spoke a little bit about the new mascot. It's cool to have toros and coyotes at a shared space. I've always been curious, and we have you here, I'm sure you could speak to this, how does it feel to be at a university? And what has that experience been like for you?
I think, if I can describe it in one word, it'd just be the opportunity. I think a lot of students go in, they want to explore, and having access to the CCH facilities, being able to take the classes during the school year and during the summer, it gives you an opportunity to challenge yourself academically and also explore your own interests. And I think that's kind of how they navigate what they want to do later in their lives. I think me taking those STEM classes, the biology classes, even while it was challenging, helped me realize that this is a field that I would like to go to and it's one that I think I can be successful in. So it's a lot of opportunity.
That's great.
Well, Samuel, I'm going to let you in behind the curtain. Let's just know, some of the questions that we asked, we already knew, man, and we're just so proud of you, so we wanted you to, we can tell that you're a very humble young man, and we appreciate that, but we want to celebrate with you, so I appreciate you sharing some of your successes. I did have a question for you, though. In regards to your decision in neuroscience, what intrigued you about that space in particular?
I think there was a period of time, like before I entered high school, where I was looking at potential career or professions I would want to go to, and I was just really interested in a couple of like STEM-related fields in medicine, like cardiology, pathology. But something that really piqued my interest was neuroscience, being able to learn a lot about the brain, just because it's the domain of mankind, it kind of dictates our whole biology, our behavior, and without the brain, the rest of the body can't function, and I thought that was really interesting. And also, I had an internship over the summer where I was able to do more research on certain aspects of the brain, and having that background, it just made me want to learn more and do more research that I feel that I can use in the medical sphere. So in neuroscience, I think that I'll be capable of translating research into something that can be practical where, in a world where there's a lot of neurological disorders that aren't exactly being addressed as effectively as they should have.
And I just, I just want to congratulate you. It sounds like you have great options, and that only speaks volumes, volumes of, to the work that you've, you've done, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want him to stay up there for a few minutes so he can be nervous, because Dr. Camarino said you're very shy, so we're going to take advantage of you up here, Samuel.
No, we're not going to, we're not going to do that. We're going to have, we're going to have you come up here, and then we're going to do photos. So we invite you to come up here and be with us, and we'll do photos. Okay. So this evening, we are reviving a tradition of recognizing retirees that had been on pause for obvious reasons during COVID, but we are, we are back at it. So we have three retirees that we'd like to honor tonight. So what we're going to do is I'll introduce each one, and then we'll have them come around, shake hands, and then have a few minutes to speak if they choose, and then we will take pictures of everyone. Okay, so the first retiree we're going to honor is Christina Lopez. First, I'll make sure that she's here. Is Christina Lopez here? I don't think she's here. Okay, so next, we, Christina, I'm sure you're watching us, because you know, along with the other 750,000 people watching us tonight, we will, we will make sure that you get your So the next person we'd like to recognize is Eleanor Thrain. So we've got Eleanor here. So Eleanor, we see that you have worked for 29 years here, teaching elementary grades and sixth grade English, language arts, what?
Sixth grade?
No?
Sixth grade?
Well, it must be true, because it's in my notes, so. No, no, I'm sorry. So I don't have this correct? Language arts, English, humanities? No?
I teach first grade.
You teach? Well, you can teach humanities to first graders.
Kind of like the same thing.
I, I guess I don't have the correct information. So you know what? We're going to let you.
Oh, no, thank you. I like yours much better.
But first, but let us know where you teach, and, and we're going to give you a few minutes at the podium, and since I don't have the correct information. Would you like a few minutes?
I teach at Bernie Elementary. I did a half a year at Barton Elementary. Then I transferred, after having children, I came back to Bernie, and I taught from fourth grade on down to first grade, and I really enjoyed it.
Okay, that's wonderful, and you know what? We're going to give you a round of applause because. And so. And, and thank you, Eleanor, for being such a good sport. Obviously, we're out of the habit, we're, we're going to refine this process, and like I said, this is the first time we're recognizing retirees, and I guess it's been three years, so.
Madam President would like the opportunity to introduce your guests that are here with you and thank your guests. Come to, come to the podium. Ms. Thrain, come to the podium.
My husband Craig Thrain. And my good friends. Oh, boy. Dr. Joanne Yuji, Mary Nelson, and Donna Tompkins, all Bernie Bs.
But we got the 29 years right, that we got right, so thank you for that. Okay. And our third retiree to honor is Jill Ridgers. So Jill, I. I invite you to the podium. I'm going to, I'm going to wait for acknowledgements, but you've worked for 37 years? Woo-hoo! Okay, we got that right. 37 years teaching elementary grades?
I started in fifth grade and moved up to middle school when we decided to put sixth graders into middle school. And then I worked my way down, and I'm now in kindergarten, which I love.
Okay. Have you been a guidance counselor at Adams?
No, I did my internship there when I got my masters. I was the GOC teacher for the last year for elementary before we decided not to have it anymore.
Okay.
Guidance opportunity classroom.
Okay, and then you are retiring from Prisk.
I am retiring from Prisk.
Okay.
Yay!
And I should have, I should have read, I should have read more wonderful attributes for Eleanor. Sorry, I guess I was thinking we didn't have the right information, so I'm going to read them for, and if they pertain to you, great. But these are the, these are the wonderful things I have in front of me, so. So Eleanor, this could be for you. Building strong homeschool partnerships and open communication with parents? I imagine that's for both of you, honestly. Coordinating the Harvest of the Month program?
Yes.
Ooh, Eleanor, okay. Providing high-quality instruction and searching for effective methods to assist all of your students, both emotionally and academically. I say that's both. Okay. Your compassion and strong understanding of child development and early learning. I'm going to say both of you, because I see nodding. Wonderful. And your nurturing classroom environment and promotion of equity, fairness, and high expectations for student achievement. Okay, I think that's both.
We're rocking it here.
I, I know it wasn't exactly smooth, but I'm so happy that you're both here, that we can honor you. So another round of applause, and then we'll have you come around.
Thank you.
And then also, as you step to the podium, if you'd like to introduce those that are here to support you, that would be wonderful, too.
Oh, gosh darn it, forgot to give this. Congratulations. I've had the best career you could ever have in the world, but it's time for other roads and other adventures. I'm getting tired. It's getting harder to get up off the floor when I work with them. I want to thank my, my friend Mary Beth Cash, who I teach with, and my principal Beth, and my son James. Thank you.
Ooh, don't sit down yet. Well, anyhow, we're going to have both Eleanor and Jill come up, and we'll do pictures. So we'll come around right to the front and.
Can you read your statement?
I'm sorry?
Her certificate. Yeah, she has, we sent a statement for her to.
Oh, did you want more time at the podium? I'm sorry.
No, I thought you must have it, sorry. Oh, they read it.
Yeah, but, no, because I neglected to give it to her. But I was thinking, well, I'll have them come up for pictures, and then I would pretend I didn't forget. So I've completely.
Tell them about the flexibility.
So if we could have our retirees come up, and then we're going to do pictures, so I'll have the Board come and stand on these risers.
Oh, that looks nice. Thank you.
I've been with Long Beach for 16 years. It's amazing being a principal here at McKinley. And being a 1st-year principal, the staff, the community, and the students have been so welcoming. I love being able to be in the classrooms with the teachers and the students. As a year-one principal, I wanted to make sure that all of our staff, all of our stakeholders had a voice, having them involved so that they can help and be invested in what we're trying to do as a school. I want to make sure that we, as a school, not just achieve our school goals, but we are happy. My students are happy, my staff is happy, we're excited about learning. One of the things that we're focusing at McKinley is building relationships. If every kid leaves their classroom feeling loved and welcomed, then we've succeeded. I love being a part of Long Beach Unified. I feel like we're on the cutting edge of doing so many things, especially with our equity work. It hasn't been easy work, really self-reflecting and really looking at ourselves and our biases and how, you know, we approach education, our students, our staff, how we... It's been really valuable.
It's always so nice to hear about the good things happening in the district. That's one of my favorite parts of the agenda. Next, we have public testimony on items listed on the agenda. So we have... We have three, but they're numbered 1, 3, and 4. Okay. Okay. So it's 3 minutes, and we will start with Dr. Kim Tabari.
Back there, so I don't know if you need to adjust your mic or something. Good evening, everybody. Board members, Superintendent Baker, Deputy Superintendent Brown, and staff. I am providing comments on Agenda Item 15.1, Connecting Community Voices with Budget Programs. As Diana mentioned, I am Dr. Kim Tabari, here as a parent, serving on the Long Beach Education Connection, a coalition of parents, guardians, community-based organizations, and advocacy organizations, working on budget and policy system-wide changes to improve school for students across the district. One budget priority area that we are advocating around is academic support. In early 2022, the data reported that over 70% or higher of students were not at math or reading grade level, over 70%. So as you talk today about this agenda item, please keep in mind the district's own mission to support the personal and intellectual success of every student, every day. Parents, guardians, and community members want all students to be successful with academic support in every grade, and here are three requests. One, budget to give tutoring vouchers to families to use with specific organizations in their community. This will also help provide some flexibility for parents' schedules. Two, budget to create opportunities for college students with a stipend to be aides in the classroom to give individual assistance to students and support teachers. And three, adopt official budget... I'm sorry. Adopt official district policies that focus on in-class time with teachers and their aides for students below grade level. To the parents listening online, I urge you to get involved in budget engagement at your school site and share other ways students need academic support. Our collective goal is to help our students succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Tabari, can you come back to the podium for a second? What was the second ask that you had?
Oh, the second ask is to create opportunities for college students with a stipend to be aides in the classroom to give individual assistance to students and support teachers.
Okay, thank you.
None of this is new, by the way. We're just repeating ourselves.
Okay. Our next speaker is Lilia Okampo.
Con dos hijos en el distrito, en la escuela Washington, y también miembro de Long Beach Education Connection. Hello, good evening. I'm Lilia Okampo, the parent of two students in Washington, and I'm also with the Long Beach Education for Parents. Estoy aquí esta tarde para hablar sobre el involucramiento familiar. De acuerdo con... Perdón. El distrito involucra a los padres que son parte del DILAC, del DCAC, pero en el distrito hay muchos padres, en las escuelas hay muchos padres que no van a esos comités, entonces creo que ellos también tienen una voz y tienen derecho de dar su opinión de lo que debe ser incluido en el LCAP y cómo se debe gastar los fondos que son destinados para educación de nuestros hijos.
And I want to go ahead and talk about parent involvement, parent participation. I know that the district has a lot of committees, like the DILAC and that DCAC for parent involvement, but there's a lot of parents that don't assist those organizations. And there's a lot of parents that I feel their voice is also very important, and they need to go ahead and express how they feel about spending in the LCAP, especially when it comes to the education.
Otros comités como el EONA, PIB, SVE, son otros padres que también deberían ser incluidos para dar su opinión en qué es necesario de ser incluido en el LCAP. También, en ese mismo orden, pronto se van a hacer remodelaciones en la escuela Washington, entonces los estudiantes van a tener que ir a otra escuela, recibir su educación, donde van a tener que transportarse, probablemente en el巴士. Y también eso va a limitar el involucramiento de los padres, porque como es la escuela de casa, muchos padres podemos ir incluso caminando a las reuniones que hay como ELAC, School Site Council, y reuniones de la directora que los hacen cada lunes. Entonces, el mover los estudiantes a otro lado también va a limitar la participación de los padres a esos grupos.
And there's other committees, like the EONA, the PIB, the SVE, and those are also parents that need to be heard, especially when it comes to including their opinion on how to spend funds from LCAP. Another point that I want to touch on is the remodeling of Washington. A lot of the students are going to have to go to other schools, and then that's also going to be... And that's also going to be another limit, because parents are not going to be able to be involved as much, because Washington is their homeschool. A lot of us could go in there and walk to our parent meetings, and that's going to hurt parent involvement. We're not going to be able to go to the ELAC and the School Site Council and the meetings that the principal holds every Monday, and that's going to also be hard on parents and students.
Es por eso que también me gustaría recomendar que provean estipendios a los padres que no están afiliados al distrito y que participan en esos comités.
And this is why I would like to go ahead and ask for stipends for those parents that would be affected, and also to go ahead and get the opinions of the parents from the other committees, so they could go ahead and affiliate with those School Site Council committees. That are not affiliated with the school district, so sorry.
Gracias por escucharme y espero que puedan tomar en cuenta estos otros padres, estos otros comités, para asegurar que realmente las voces de los padres están siendo escuchadas.
Thank you for listening to me, and I hope that you guys are able to include these other parents, these other committees, so they're heard when it comes to these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Ball. Michael Ball?
Hi. Hi, sorry, can you hear me? Hi, good evening. Good evening, Long Beach Unified School District Board, Superintendent Baker, Deputy Superintendent Brown, and staff. My name is Michael Ball, and I'm a community member here to speak on Agenda Item 15.2, Community Voices with Budget Programs. I'm here to speak in support of both the Long Beach Education Connection and counselors in the district. I'd like to uplift our community's request to prioritize academic achievement, family engagement, and enrichment programs, as well as supporting counselors. Our students and families are whole people who need holistic support, and they need to be met where they are. The budget is a vital tool for supporting our community, and we're calling on all of you to use this tool in support of the asks. We're calling on the district to strengthen its enrichment program specifically by funding an audit of enrichment programs that evaluates the effectiveness and enrollment of each program, and results in a heat map of programs that are available around the district on the district's website. In addition, we're also calling on the district to support counselors, as counseling support has been a consistently named part of recent LCAPs, particularly Action 4.1 in 2021 and 2022. We hope that the district will work towards reimagining school counseling to best support student well-being and success by commissioning an independent study of student support services to examine caseloads and duties, implementing a district-wide comprehensive school counseling program, committing to achieve a 250-to-1 student-to-counselor ratio, prioritize hiring black counselors, and engaging with community quarterly on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have speakers for items not listed on the agenda. Comments on an item not listed for discussion today must be about issues that are within the jurisdiction of the board. Please note that due to California law, we, the board, cannot enter into a discussion on any items not listed on the agenda. Board members or staff may ask clarifying questions or provide clarification regarding public comments, but such discussion is limited. Each speaker will have up to 3 minutes, and the total time will be 30 minutes, and we should just be able to make it. Our first speaker is Griselda Arias.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak at this meeting of the Board of Education. My name is Cieolali Flores, and I'm an 8th-grade student in Long Beach Unified School District. I'm here to talk about school of choice. The high school choice process should be equitable for all students. The process involves completing a Canvas lesson, exploring pathways, and completing a high school choice application through a system of ranking. This ranking system promotes uncertainty and compromises your chances of admission into any other specialized program. It can also discourage you from applying to your dream choice out of fear of not getting in. If you don't strategize correctly, you run the risk of being assigned a pathway at your high school of residence, basically eliminating all choice, restricting your access to any other specialized programs, and limiting your opportunities to take rigorous coursework. My top two choices were Pace and CIC. My mom and I attended Poly Site Night, and at the Pace presentation, we were assured by the Pace presenters that if you met the requirements for Pace, which I did, you'd get in. Because of this assurance, I felt confident when I assigned Pace Rank 1 and CIC Rank 2. I did not get into either program, even though I met requirements for both. I was assigned Rank 4, which is a default pathway at my school of residence, and not a specialized program. I missed out on my first and second choices because the district did not honor what was said about Pace admission, and because I did not strategically assign CIC Rank 1 because of the assurance regarding Pace. I feel like Long Beach Unified School District has let me down. The entire process has been unfair and stressful for me, and I'm worried about my future educational opportunities, as my Rank 4 pathway does not allow all of the accelerated coursework that Pace or CIC require starting in 9th grade. Because of my experience, I hope that the district considers not only how this process has affected me personally, but also how it limits access to specialized programs for all students. Thank you for listening to my testimony.
Next, we have Jessie. Jessie Comer?
Good afternoon, Honorable Board, members in attendance and those tuning in on TV. My name is Jessie Comer. I'm a parent of three students within LBUSD, one 5th grader, one TK, and one 1st grader. Thank you for allowing me to speak in regards to a critical issue which is impacting LBUSD students at large. One of the issues that greatly impacts student learning within LBUSD is indeed mental health and not learning loss or accelerated learning needs. We know that all children develop both socially, emotionally, over the course of their school age years. We also know that this learning process is effective when it begins early and continues through high school. We are also aware of many systemic barriers and equalities like poverty, which affect a child's social and emotional development. Social-emotional learning is of high importance, especially when it comes down to a student's ability to learn specific skills like managing their emotions, interacting with others, communication, and most importantly, conflict resolution. Counselors are the first line of defense as it relates to students' mental health concerns. These individuals are continually overburdened with daily administrative duties. I feel that a counselor's role within a school campus is to support the student body socially and emotionally, and should not be weighed down with these daily administrative duties. The ratio of counselors to students is preventing them from effectively supporting students and families, which is desperately needed in our post-COVID environment. The lack of school counselors is unnecessarily putting students' lives at risk. Data shows that suicide rates and self-harm are at an all-time high. In addition, the lack of support to students has resulted in the modeling behavior which impacts a teacher's ability to effectively teach. Focusing on equality and SEL is important, because many schools and districts are currently grappling with how to better implement this concept. They are both trying to develop social and emotional initiatives while at the same time trying to serve all students equally. To focus on all students' strengths, weaknesses, and differences is required in order to ensure they are indeed developing socially and emotionally. In closing, placing SEL responsibilities on teachers is not an ideal replacement for the critical need of having additional counselors embedded within each LBUSD campus, nor is placing social workers on each campus inadequate fit. There are many different beneficial outcomes that can come from implementing SEL within equity lines, which include, but are not limited to, student engagement, self-awareness, engendering trust between students and their peers, as well as educators. It will also help them to better understand themselves and their community. In addition, they will learn better ways to address problems both inside and outside of their classroom. Increasing the amount of counselors to assist students within LBUSD campuses is the only viable solution I can think of to better address the increasing need for mental health services within LBUSD. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Comer. Next, we have Lauren.
Good afternoon, Honorable Board. My name is Lauren Zwerner. I am a current senior in CIC Magnet Program at Long Beach Poly. I'm here today... said about Pace admission and because I did not strategically assign CIC Rank One because of the assurance regarding Pace. I feel like Long Beach Unified School District has let me down. The entire process has been unfair and stressful for me and I'm worried about my future educational opportunities as my Rank Four pathway does not allow all of the accelerated coursework that Pace or CIC require starting in ninth grade. Because of my experience, I hope that the district considers not only how this process has affected me personally, but also how it limits access to specialized programs for all students. Thank you for listening to my testimony.
Next, we have Jessie. Jessie Comer?
Good afternoon, Honorable Board, members in attendance and those tuning in on TV. My name is Jessie Comer. I'm a parent of three students within LBUSD, one fifth grader, one TK, and one first grader. Thank you for allowing me to speak in regards to a critical issue which is impacting LBUSD students at large. One of the issues that greatly impacts student learning within LBUSD is indeed mental health and not learning loss or accelerated learning needs. We know that all children develop both socially, emotionally, over the course of their school age years. We also know that this learning process is effective when it begins early and continues through high school. We are also aware of many systemic barriers and equalities like poverty, which affect a child's social and emotional development. Social-emotional learning is of high importance, especially when it comes down to a student's ability to learn specific skills like managing their emotions, interacting with others, communication, and most importantly, conflict resolution. Counselors are the first line of defense as it relates to students' mental health concerns. These individuals are continually overburdened with daily administrative duties. I feel that a counselor's role within a school campus is to support the student body socially and emotionally and should not be weighed down with these daily administrative duties. The ratio of counselors to students is preventing them from effectively supporting students and families, which is desperately needed in our post-COVID environment. The lack of school counselors is unnecessarily putting students' lives at risk. Data shows that suicide rates and self-harm are at an all-time high. In addition, the lack of support to students has resulted in the modeling behavior which impacts a teacher's ability to effectively teach. Focusing on equality and SEL is important because many schools and districts are currently grappling with how to better implement this concept. They are both trying to develop social and emotional initiatives while at the same time trying to serve all students equally. To focus on all students' strengths, weaknesses, and differences is required in order to ensure they are indeed developing socially and emotionally. In closing, placing SEL responsibilities on teachers is not an ideal replacement for the critical need of having additional counselors embedded within each LBUSD campus, nor is placing social workers on each campus inadequate fit. There are many different beneficial outcomes that can come from implementing SEL within equity lines, which include, but are not limited to, student engagement, self-awareness, engendering trust between students and their peers, as well as educators. It will also help them to better understand themselves and their community. In addition, they will learn better ways to address problems both inside and outside of their classroom. Increasing the amount of counselors to assist students within LBUSD campuses is the only viable solution I can think of to better address the increasing need for mental health services within LBUSD. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Comer. Next, we have Lauren.
Good afternoon, Honorable Board. My name is Lauren Zwerner. I am a current senior in CIC Magnet Program at Long Beach Poly. I'm here today to talk to you about why you should invest time and effort into the outreach of magnet programs, as well as bring back shadow days for eighth graders. As a current student of an LBUSD Magnet Program, I can attest to how the shadow days truly helped me make a decision as an eighth grader. As soon as I was enrolled at the Lowell Elementary School, I was destined to go to Wilson High School as there was a direct pipeline from Rogers Middle School. As an eighth grader, shadow days allowed me to visit the schools I was interested in rather than the ones I was destined to go to. I was able to see the environment and family I would be able to build at both Wilson or Poly, and ultimately I chose Poly as my second home. On my visit to Poly, I was able to experience what it was truly like to be a high school freshman, go on a class, experience a different bell schedule, and truly getting to know the environment I would spend the next four years at. As many of you know, this is the college decision season for many high school seniors. When I go to visit these campuses, I decide where I want to spend the next four years. I think about when I went to my high school shadow day and looked at the atmosphere and rah-rah around the campus. When comparing the two experiences, there is truly no difference. Both eighth graders and high school seniors are finding, are both finding a new home for the next four years. Magnet programs have allowed me, as a student, to strive for better and to get good grades. I am now able to say that I will be attending UCLA this upcoming fall and that wouldn't have been, that would not have been possible without my experiences and decision on to go to Poly. By depriving students of shadow days, you are depriving them of the experience to make an educated decision for their future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Miley.
My name is Miley Quinn and I am a Poly senior going to study audio engineering in college. In my four years at Poly, I was on varsity cross-country and for the past three years, I have been in both of the top jazz groups, Jazz A and Vocal Jazz One. I was able to do this because I was in CIC, which is a magnet program at Poly, and I was not in a career technical pathway. So I had the ability to explore my multiple interests and find what I liked. In eighth grade, I was planning on going to Milliken, but I couldn't get a shadow day there. Through shadowing Pace and CIC students, my choice was made. It was clear then and it's clear now that Poly prepares students for success. Unfortunately, there's a misconception that Poly is unsafe and fosters an unacademic environment. I recall my peers at Marshall making these comments in eighth grade that Poly was ghetto or dangerous or a bad school. In Dr. Baker's statement, Excellence Requires Equity, she writes that, quote, "Excellence includes preparing students for success in an environment that is diverse." And from our football games, to our school musicals, to our intercultural fairs, it is clear that no community embodies excellence and diversity quite like Poly does. In this statement, Dr. Baker mentions a plan to combat, quote, "issues of equity and implicit bias." Unfortunately, it is evident that there is a bias against Poly, which is an inner-city, majority, non-white school. But we can dismantle this bias. We, as students, parents, teachers, and board members, can work together to uplift these great magnet programs such as Pace and CIC, and we can keep our numbers strong. But in order to do so, we need your help. We want to do community outreach and the best way to do that is through shadow days and allowing prospective students to see firsthand everything that we have to offer. Through shadow days, we can dismantle these racist stereotypes just by the students experiencing what the schools have to offer. If not for shadow days, I wouldn't have been at Poly and I wouldn't have discovered my passions for music and audio production. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike.
Good afternoon, Honorable Board. I'm Mike Gien, a current senior in the Pace Magnet Program at Long Beach Poly and a future ant eater majoring in social science and public policy. I'm here today to talk to you about why you should invest and bring back shadow day for eighth graders. When I was in the eighth grade, my whole family was against the idea of me attending Poly for the simple reason that they were concerned about the neighborhood. Who wouldn't? As for any parent such as my own, they were inherently concerned about my safety and well-being. However, when granted the opportunity to shadow at Poly for a day, I took it instantly and I never regretted that decision. When my mother dropped me off, she was surprised how deep you have to enter into the parking lot to enter the campus and showed relief when she saw numerous administrators at the gate. When I entered the campus itself, I was greeted by a great sense of pride and community that I didn't find in any other schools. I was engulfed by the amount of students in AP classes, but also how the teachers interacted with the students. It was something different that I had previously seen. Likewise, when I was a panelist for Pace, many parents questioned the safety of the school, in which I replied that as a cross-country runner, we run from Poly to the beach or to Signal Hill. Additionally, whenever we're running, we're often cheered or applauded by adults and students alike. What surrounds Poly isn't what people have falsely accused it of, but surrounded by community enriched with unity and pride. I wouldn't have had the future I have now if I weren't for shadowing at Poly. This is why we're advocating for the district to bring back shadow day. Additionally, a logical concern is that not all students will have the same opportunity. However, that shouldn't be grounds to remove shadow day as a whole. By prioritizing and focusing on providing resources to grant shadow day, you're investing in the student's future. But please do not abuse an excuse that has been used time and time again in attempts to reach what you believe is equitable. We're the last class that could shadow and we are advocating that you will bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alani.
I'm Alani Moss and I'm currently a senior in the Long Beach Poly CIC Magnet Program. I am an international ambassador, a linked learning pathway ambassador, a singer, an actor, and a proud Long Beach native. I am also a future Triton at UCSD studying political science with an emphasis on public policy. I, like many other students, based my decision on Poly through my experience in shadowing current students at Poly, which has been taken away by the district. I and these students here are here today to ask for help in the process of regaining access to community outreach such as shadow days. In the LBUSD Code of Ethics, the board members are expected to follow the following principles: respect, honesty, trustworthiness, courtesy, commitment, loyalty, self-discipline, integrity, fairness, responsibility, cooperation, citizenship, and compassion. Four out of those 13 principles are being blatantly ignored. Mr. Miller, in a Long Beach Post article in 2020, you noted that the night of your swearing that you had a, quote, "true respect for the district for seeing more in 12-year-old Eric Miller than you saw in yourself." We, the students, are asking you today to see us and help the district see us as they once saw you. Mr. Benitez, in your own campaign website, juanbenitez.org, you stated, quote, "that you would like to continue to stand up for all students in all schools," that you, quote, "enjoy advocating for students," and lastly, that you, quote, "believe," sorry, "that all students should have equitable opportunities." Please help us and be our voice in conversations that we cannot be heard or are completely silenced. Additionally, in the Excellence and Equity Board policy, it states that equity in LBUSD is as follows, excuse me, that LBUSD is expected to take action to end systemic racism and discrimination that harms students. But there is an act of discrimination against magnet programs. Additionally, it says that the district will intentionally focus on BIPOC in students with disabilities as a way of centering your efforts and strengthening the educational experience that everyone receives. But the same district is actively taking away educational experiences that are shadow days. Furthermore, the district is restricting resources that encourages students like us to come to schools like Poly that is in turn causing harm to incoming high school students. Shadow days, not only do they strengthen the school and the pathway or program pride, which specifically for Poly nulls and disproves misconceptions of a, quote, "ghetto" learning environment.
I'm sorry.
Darn. Nards.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you. Next, we have Laura. We have Laura? No? Or yes?
Mi nombre es Laura Mozo. Soy madre de dos hijas en el Distrito Escolar en la Escuela Washington y Poly. Y mi comentario es la preocupación que estoy teniendo al saber que los estudiantes en la Escuela Washington y Poly van a tener un cambio de cierre por motivos de remodelación, ya que es muy bueno porque esas escuelas necesitan un cambio urgente. Pero por otro lado, el cierre de la Escuela Washington será impactado para nuestra comunidad. La mayor parte asisten ahí y cada día tenemos un involucramiento de padres voluntarios para actividades que permite la escuela, como practicar deportes de básquet para los jóvenes, ferias de recursos, reuniones de padres, organizaciones que preparan a los padres para abogacías, y un grupo de padres voluntarios para cruzar seguros a los estudiantes y establecer relaciones y de relaciones seguras y de confianza en los estudiantes. También tome en cuenta que la mayor parte no tienen transporte y eso costará tiempo y dinero para nuestras familias. Ellos tienen distintos grados en sus estudiantes, el cual no los van a poder hacer. Por otro punto importante, las ayudas para la salud mental se ha incrementado, es muy alto, y no tienen lo suficiente en nuestras escuelas. La ayuda para los profesores con asistentes, tutorías de calidad, almuerzos saludables y de calidad, capacitadas, perdón, seguridad capacitada para detección de armas, ya que nuestras escuelas están muy inseguras. Si ustedes son las personas adecuadas, tomen en consideración nuestras peticiones. Necesitamos jóvenes graduados con éxito. Y otro punto, no sé si estoy saliéndome de él, pero pasar una ley donde sean obligatorias todas nuestras reuniones escolares para los padres. Gracias.
Good evening. My name is Laura Mozo. I am the mother of two daughters in the school district at Washington and Poly. My comment is that today I find myself worried to know that Washington and Poly will have closures due to remodeling. This is going to be a big change for the students. Although this is really good because schools need urgent changes, on the other hand, the closures at Washington will impact the community. A big part of the community attends there and every day we have parent involvement with parent volunteers. For activities at the school that the school has allowed, for example, practice for sports like basketball, resource fairs, meetings, parent organizations that help parents with advocacy, and a group of parent volunteers to help students cross the street safely and to establish safe and trusting relationship with students. I also want you to consider that the majority does not have transportation. That will cost time and money because many have students in different grades in different schools and they wouldn't be able to do it. Another important point is help for the mental health. Since it has increased, numbers are really high and there's not enough at the schools. And also help for the teachers. High-quality tutoring, healthy lunches, securities trained to detect gun and gun safety. And also, if you're the people assigned, please consider these, this following thing. Please consider our petitions and also if you guys could pass a law that makes these meetings, these school meetings for parents mandatory. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Reema Hossan. Dr. Reema Hossan?
Good evening, board members, executive team, our Long Beach community. My name is Dr. Reema Hossan. I'm the counselor at Jackie Robinson Academy, serving 753 students in grades TK through eight. I am honored and privileged to be in the position of leading and guiding our students. I am also deeply concerned about the overall well-being of our students in the aftermath of COVID. Our students need and deserve support. This year, there has been an alarming increase in students' mental health concerns across grade levels, including suicidal thoughts, self-harm, signs of anxiety and depression, trouble regulating emotions, loss of focus and stamina, fighting, self-medicating, and vaping. I find myself prioritizing which needs to meet all day. I'm constantly putting out fires instead of doing preventative work because I have no time and I am only one person. What devastates me the most is that when I had a student referred for self-harm, I asked the student to wait for two hours because I was engaged in one of the many non-counseling duties that I have. I could not do a suicide assessment on this student for two hours. Shouldn't this student and every student have access to a trained school counselor, especially when they're suicidal? Aren't we here to serve and support students? However, the issue is here that we are, there aren't enough of us and all of our time is spent on testing, supervision, and discipline. This is why we are in dire need of increasing FTEs at our sites, of implementing counseling standards and adopting a comprehensive school counseling program based on the ASCA guidelines. This will protect students' individuality, will prepare LBUSD students to the challenges of our future by supporting their academic career, personal, and social development. Together, we can ensure equitable opportunities for every student and increase students' sense of belonging, identity, and agency. I'm pleading with you today to please consider increasing FTEs at our site, implementing counseling standards, and a comprehensive school counseling program so counselors can make a difference one life at a time. The research is definitive, counselors are ready, parents want it, and students deserve it. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Proud to be LBUSD.
Thank you. Next, we have Kayla. Kayla?
Good afternoon, Long Beach Board of Education. I'm Kayla Wilson and I am currently a senior at Wilson High School in the Leadership and Public Service Program. I'm here speaking to you today to support demands to reimagine school counseling in Long Beach Unified School District. According to the Organizing Committee survey of 2022, 84% of LBUSD school counselors spend more than 25% of their time on non-counseling duties. The recommended time to provide direct and indirect support to students is 80%, which means that counselors are not meeting this in Long Beach Unified School District. The Organizing Committee asked LBUSD counselors, what would you need to do your job more effectively? 77.8% said decreased student caseload, 81% said decreased non-counselor duties, 52.4% said professional development, and 68.3% said increased support from the district or county. Some of the most common non-counselor duties tags that counselors have been assigned are being spending their time on scheduling, which is 63.5%, 82.5% on supervision, 84.1% on test coordination, 55.6% on non-intervention discipline, and 57.1 administrative duties. In elementary schools K through 8 and high school, each grade level has a different student-to-counselor ratio. More than three of the schools in the district in each of these categories are above the ratio. Me personally, I went to Colan Powell Academy, a K through 8. I didn't meet my counselor until my eighth grade year and I didn't even know what a counselor was until I got into high school. I didn't know that a counselor was there to help me with my needs for education and my personal and social needs. As a freshman in high school, I went into Wilson and I was very overwhelmed. I went through extreme culture shock and I didn't know that I could get help from a counselor. I didn't have an actual relationship with my counselor until my senior year of high school. So when I go to college, I'm practicing mental health and I think it's very important because as of now, I am interning with kindergarteners at Gompers Elementary School. So I hope you will take this into consideration and support this cause. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kayla. Next, we have. Next, we have Abigail.
Hello, good evening. My name is Abigail Cuber and I am a parent of two LBUSD students. Our youth are in dire need of more mental health support and social emotional learning. The professionally trained, capable and most important, caring social school counselors want to provide this for the, for our kids but are severely limited with the unrealistic student to counselor ratios and unmanageable administrative duties they are tasked with on a day-to-day basis. School counselors in LBUSD are far too frequently assigned duties and responsibilities that do not take advantage of their specialized training. LBUSD schools have one of the highest student to, student to counselor ratios in the region, ranging from two to five times the two hundred and fifty to one recommendation from the California Association of School Counselors and the American School Counselor Association. The research is clear, in schools where counselors have appropriate duties and responsibilities along with sufficient student to counselor ratios, students have higher academics, better attendance, lower suspension and expulsion rates and better all, overall mental health. The parents of LBUSD are asking that the district develop a comprehensive school counseling program and support counselors who are the first responders to our students and parents in need. Stop putting a Band-Aid on the problem. We need real changes. Many other districts in Orange County and LA County have achieved the two hundred and fifty to one ratio. So why not Long Beach? Last week, there was a threat at my students, at my kid's school and that took away the principal and the counselor to deal with it. We have no assistant principal, we only have one counselor at Coverley, our K three eight school. So who was left to deal with any other students that may have had an emergency or a suicide assessment? Any emotional support? There was no one left for four hours. We are asking the district to use the LCAP funding to hire more counselors, to lower the ratios and put the counselors at school sites. We need them where the students are. We are asking for a comprehensive school counseling program with standards of what counselors should and shouldn't be doing with their time. As you've heard before, early intervention is key. We have to get the students with the counselors early to get them the social emotional skills that they need to be successful in life. Thank you.
Um, board, we, we, we're almost at time. We have two more speakers.
Can we extend time, please?
Um, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second it.
I'll support extending time.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? No? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed, any abstentions? Then we will allow time for the last two speakers. So next we will go with Rudy.
My name is Rudy Kraus. I'm the author of Origin of the Species Homo sapiens Vaccinicus: Human COVID Virus Parasite. The most important word in my book is anaerobic. COVID is an anaerobic virus. What they did was they changed the gain of function, the gain of function. You hear gain of function, gain of function. I hear Redfield talk about gain of function, the furon cleavage site, the bat virus. It doesn't make a difference what they spliced it with. COVID is an anaerobic virus. It lives without oxygen. You could have made the, spliced the COVID virus together with Godzilla DNA and you look down a microscope and go, oh my God, it's breathing fire. We'll never be able to kill this. But if it's anaerobic, our oxygen-rich red blood cells kill it. Always has, always will. For four hundred million years from when we first contacted COVID. Well, that didn't happen this time. Why not? Because the gain of function was to aerobicize the COVID virus to enable it to inhale, to breathe a slight amount of oxygen, like point zero five percent. And that's what made it super contagious. Now can you imagine? Here it's been trapped in its anaerobic prison all of its existence, from the primordial soup forward. And now all of a sudden it can inhale a slight amount of oxygen. That's going to make it super contagious. But what it also did was it allowed it to grow into its parasite form. Because all viruses are parasites. This one looks like a little squid. It has a head, a body, six tails, six tentacles. But it's still basically anaerobic. Then they chop that up in an atomic blender into a million pieces and then they put that in the vaccine and then they shot that into two hundred million Americans. Five point five billion people. That's why they're getting myocarditis, having vaccine injuries. I'm preparing a, a report for Tedros now.
Excuse me, but that's your three minutes. We voted to extend time, but your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker, we have Keith Hudson.
Good evening, board, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Keith Hudson. As you can see, I'm in the United States Space Force. Uh, I'm stationed up at Los Angeles Air Force Base in El Segundo, uh, but my family lives here in Long Beach and we've lived here for almost two years. I have two children who attend Carver Elementary School. And as a member of the military, ten years in the Air Force and nearly two in the Space Force, my family moves frequently. My daughter is seven years old and she has lived in four states. We could have lived closer to the base. Uh, we considered houses in El Segundo, condos in Redondo Beach, San Pedro, many other places, but Long Beach felt like home. In fact, a selling point to our house is that it's down the street from Carver Elementary. I haven't tried, but I think I could throw a baseball from my front yard and make it to the playground. It might bounce a few times, but we're that close. Uh, the Space Force chose Southern California for us, but we chose Long Beach and we chose Carver. When we move so frequently, change is hard. My children struggle with moves and as the new, and also with the newness. My son is at his third school in the fourth grade. Both of my children are voracious readers. They love learning about their new homes as a family where we're first exposed to the mission project and getting to learn more about Southern California. Uh, they love getting lost in worlds of fiction. They long for books and the services of libraries and especially the librarians like Ms. Colbertson. Uh, our biggest challenge with our, our children is the amount of books that fill their backpacks each week and possibly giving them future back problems because of how much they love reading. Uh, they love Ms. Colbertson, they love that she is a credentialed librarian, a librarian who provides more than, more services than what a media assistant can provide. Uh, in life, we seek professionals for help. When we need legal advice, we seek lawyers. When we're sick, we seek doctors. When we need books, we need the trained and, uh, degreed professionals and the capabilities of trained librarians. Uh, they have the desire and capabilities to assist with the research, provide resources to the teachers and like Mrs. Colbertson, they can help provide and pass on that love for reading and learning that our children so desperately need. She curates their collection at the school. She ensures the diversity of the books, aids in classroom lessons and provides instruction to those students. She has the capability and capacity to pursue resources that our students need. Uh, but by removing and replacing librarians, it denies them of the, of the best that they need. We're all here tonight because we want the best for our students. I implore you to keep librarians in all of our schools, not just Title I schools. Long Beach school students deserve the highest quality of education and there should not be inequities across the district. I had the chance to provide a STEM talk at Bobby Smith Elementary and I had an astronaut colleague join me via Zoom call and advance the librarian there, helped prepare the students and helped with their questions. It's wonderful Bobby Smith, as a Title I school, gets that opportunity to keep their librarian. But just because Carver is, is not a Title I, the students do not deserve to get less support. National studies show that librarians help improve reading and schools that do not have librarians suffer and do, uh, perform more poorly. Pennsylvania has shown this, studies across the nation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Consent Calendar A. This consent calendar groups the approval of routine agenda items into one action for efficiency and to allow the board to focus our meetings more on student outcomes and other key issues of the district. Are there any requests from the board members to, uh, clarify anything on the consent calendar? If not, oh, Mr. Miller.
Yes, uh, I'd like to propose some amendments on, uh, subject thirteen point nine.
Okay.
The schedule of Board of Education meetings and workshops.
Okay, and what change would you like to see made on that?
Uh, my suggestion is, uh, just one, well, I guess it is two, that we currently are meeting on August sixteenth. I would like to propose that it be the first half of August and move that meeting to August second.
Okay, so moving the August sixteenth meeting to August second, does that include workshop dates?
Yes, and so then the workshop dates would be August first and August second. Instead of August fifteenth and August sixteenth.
Okay, I think what I'm gonna do, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Strumper, but I think what I'm gonna do is I'm going to set aside item thirteen point nine so we can vote on the consent calendar items thirteen point one to thirteen point eight and take a separate vote on thirteen point nine. Okay, I'm gonna do that then. So, our vote on the consent calendar A will be thirteen, items thirteen point one to thirteen point eight. That way we can have a separate discussion on the item you brought up. Were there any other changes you'd like to see made or?
Uh, I'll wait till we get to that topic now that we've taken it off.
Um, are there any other, uh, changes or clarifications to consent calendar A?
On item sixty-three with the grant proposal for, um, for dual enrollment. Guess my question is, will we be providing transportation for students who may enroll in the, the dual enrollment program with the grant? Um, not with the grant, but budget it.
So the, the grant doesn't specifically address transportation. It's something that the district can consider. Our students do currently have tap cards that allow them to transport across the city, but it's something that the, the district could consider. But that grant doesn't specifically address that.
Correct. I'm just asking if the district will, uh, consider or will provide rather transportation for the students if they need it.
Okay, are there any other, um, questions or comments on thirteen point one to thirteen point eight? Okay, if not, we need a, uh, a motion?
I move to approve Consent Calendar A, removing item thirteen point nine from it.
Second.
Okay, and then I will turn it over to our board secretary to take a roll call vote.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member Lopez, preferential vote?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes four zero.
President Craighead?
Thank you, yes.
I'm, I'll make a suggestion and Mr. Strumper can also weigh in on this. Um, because you've pulled the item for separate discussion, perhaps this is not a time-sensitive item. So tonight could be an opportunity to provide input that you'd like about the calendar and dates that work and for staff to then bring it back with your input considered for future votes. So we don't get into, you know, trying to follow all of the motions, but perhaps discuss it and then I'll take notes and we'll come back in the, in the next board meeting with the revised suggestion if, if you'd like to do that.
Um, Mr. Miller, you're the one who brought up, um, this item for clarification. Would that be satisfactory to you?
Yeah, but I, I, I think we can get it done today. I mean, I don't know. This is, yeah, I, I think that this is one of those that we can talk through at the moment. I appreciate the suggestion, uh, Jill, but I, I think this is one that we can iron out.
Okay, well then let's start with a motion for thirteen point nine with the correction to change the August sixteenth date to August second. And so let's start with a motion on that.
Well, uh, if you, if you, uh, well, a motion to approve, because I guess we have to go to discussion, right?
Right.
Two amendments. I guess, a motion.
Is there a second?
What's the motion?
The motion is to approve item thirteen point nine, changing the date from August sixteenth to August second.
And here's, here's why I'd like you to consider discussing it tonight, but not voting. We need to look at the business of the district and consider that if we go between August second and September sixth, that's a long time when we're preparing to start school. And it may not seem like a long time in terms of presentations and things like that, but in terms of the business of the district that you approve, it could put us in a pinch and needing to call a special meeting anyway to hold the business of the district. So that's partly why I wanted to make the suggestion to talk about changes and then allow us to go back and sequence how we think about our business practices and come back to you.
Understood.
Okay, I'd like to add something to that.
Let me second the motion first and then we can, sorry, second.
Okay, now we're at discussion, Ms. Lopez.
So I'd like to see, um, the workshops being held twice a year versus three times a year.
Do we have any further comment on that? I, I would just like, well, I'll, Mr. Miller, I'll let you go.
Well, I, I, I think that there's two things. First, I just wanted to speak to the why on, uh, a couple of my decisions. Uh, when it comes to flexibility, it's easier for, uh, my schedule in particular for the workshops, if the workshops are on the front end of the calendar year. So, uh, having our workshop that are currently scheduled in August to be the front, front half of August would be more beneficial for me. Same thing with any of our, our upcoming workshops. So I would also ask for the same consideration when we're talking about our workshops in March. Yes, earlier dates in the front half of the month.
So... So do you have a, um, I guess, do you have an opinion on cutting back, uh, workshop times from three times a year as we currently do to twice a year?
Well, I would give that to board member, uh, Lopez to speak to. That was her suggestion.
Madam President, I, I would offer the suggestion that that, we take that as a separate motion that we're specifically talking about changing a meeting date from mid-August to the beginning of August. Just so that we can have separate discussions on each of those. And because I've already seconded his amendment, then we're adding something else, I mean, his motion. We're adding something else to it.
Right. Okay, so how about this? How about we, we stick to that motion exclusively to, to the motion with that one amendment and then we table a discussion on workshop dates for a separate discussion? Do we want to do a separate discussion or do we want to do a separate motion? To, to finish that business here tonight or do we want to put that forward at a future meeting?
I'm, I'm comfortable moving it to another meeting.
I think we can move it to another meeting, but I also like to add something else, and I don't know if that's a third motion, because I'd like to move the March dates again to the beginning of the month versus the middle of the month.
Okay, Mr. Strumpfer, I am now gonna look to you for some guidance, because we have a lot going on with this one item.
Yeah, my suggestion would be to have this full discussion about what dates work and what dates don't work, what you'd like to do, and then bring it back at our next board meeting, so that as Dr. Baker mentioned, she can make sure that business-wise it works, and make sure with the, if we cut back on, you know, workshops, that those timings work and all that. And it sounds like, Mr. Miller, you're okay with that. That would be my suggestion, just because on the fly, like I noticed that we have a board meeting on July 26th, so then we'd have one the following week, and then not another one for like a whole month. So, understand that we can try to see what we can do to shift those around, make it work, but I think doing it on the fly is a little dangerous in a sense of doing business for the district. So, my recommendation would be to have this full discussion, try to work out dates or, you know, kind of, you can have a discussion about agreement about either cutting back the workshops or changing the dates, but let us bring it back at the next board meeting to finalize it. That would be my suggestion.
Okay, so I will have everybody weigh in on this issue, so that our comments can be recorded, and then we will bring it back another time to vote on it. So, I would need your...
That will also allow Mr. Otto to be present for the discussion as well, and he's 20% of your decision-making bodies, so that gives him an opportunity to review as well.
Yes, but the fact is, we have a motion on the floor, and so I'm gonna ask your permission to rescind that motion?
Permission granted.
Okay, so let's go ahead and have a discussion tonight, and then we'll save the vote for a future meeting. Is that where we're going? Okay, so, Mr. Miller?
You look, you have any other comments about the calendar besides August?
No, I think that, just for clarification, there were a couple of philosophical points that were brought up, right? Mine was about moving workshop dates to the front end of the month. I think, we're talking about philosophically. Philosophically, again, a Board Member Lopez spoke to, maybe it's a bit much to have three workshops within a year, reducing it down to two, and what does that look like? And then, I think that that was it, the two major philosophical points. Now, how do we make those days work within the calendar year? I guess you're gonna have to use the same calculator like the NFL does with football games and what's on. I don't know how they pull it off, so we'll leave that to you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Yeah, I don't have any objection to changing a meeting, Board of Education meeting dates and/or times for that matter. As long as we stay to Wednesdays, I know that there are exceptions where, for whatever reason, we have, like tonight as an example, but those are special cases. So, as long as we're consistent to Wednesdays, as long as we're consistent to trying to meet twice a month on those Wednesdays, I don't object to any, like, dates, changes on dates. The matter of workshops, however, I find that when we combine workshop dates with meeting dates, it's helpful so that we don't have to have additional alternating weeks for workshops. I find it helpful, I think my experience has been in five years that we're at capacity meeting two days. It's one full day, partial day, and then a meeting. So, if we want to schedule workshops and still use the Board of Education meeting day, I think it would be hard to add like a third day and reduce meeting times of workshops. I'm not opposed to changing dates of workshops, but I do feel that if we reduce the number of workshops, that means we would have to figure out where to add that additional time on the workshops. And my experience has been that as it is, those days are pretty long and intense and cover a lot of content. And I'm thinking out loud here, since it is just a conversation discussion. I do find it, I have found it helpful to have meaningful time prior to the beginning of an academic year. There's a lot of stuff that happens in the summer, there's a lot of updates, new stuff, so I do strongly think that we should have a workshop in August, whatever date that may fall on. I also find it extremely helpful to have substantive time to have presentations and discussion in the middle of each of our fall periods and spring periods. So, again, if we were to take one of those out, I think we wouldn't have an opportunity to have substantive discussion presentations. So, I wouldn't favor reducing workshops, but again, I'd be open to figuring out if there are other dates that work for workshops. I totally understand the scheduling thing. So, as long as there are no business reasons, as it relates to district business, to find alternate dates, I'm okay with that, but I would be hesitant to reduce our overall number of workshops. As it is, I'd actually like to see us meeting more times. And just because I always feel that we're pressed, that we're trying to cover a lot of stuff in a day and a half, and then do the district business, so reducing the number of meetings, I think I wouldn't support.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
Yes, and I guess maybe I wasn't clear. I was not looking to reduce the number of meetings, just having the workshops biannually, so possibly three days in August and then three days in March, so, for clarification.
And then I'll just go on the record saying that I like having meetings throughout the year, and the changes that I've seen with how we do business as a board is that we're paying closer attention to student outcomes, and if we only have board workshops twice a year, then we're not able to do a deeper dive and to look at student outcomes throughout the year as much. And so, I also agree that if we cut down our board workshop time, we're gonna increase time during our regularly scheduled meetings in order to hear from our staff and to get the reports and to take a look at data and to do the necessary budget work. There are so many moving parts to a district, everything that we need to be aware of, I have to say, I'm with you, Dr. Benitez, in thinking that we need to meet more often, and I know that's maybe, I don't know, I'll just say it, maybe it's a little nerdy, but I think we need to meet more, because we have to be on top of the work that's being done. We have to be able to allow the staff to report to us, and there are so many different aspects of the district that we need to understand. And the workshops give us the opportunity to have a deeper dive, to give more than a few minutes in taking a look at these things. And when we meet in our workshops and we have, you know, two solid days, first day, full workshop, second day, half a day workshop, and then we have our committee meetings in the afternoon and a, you know, board meeting in the evening, two days is a lot. It's a lot of information, it's like drinking from a fire hydrant. It's a lot, and I think maybe keeping the workshops spread throughout the year would be more manageable as far as absorbing information. And so, that would be my opinion on that. Okay, so if there's nothing further on the subject, or is there? Yes.
Yeah, I wanted to add an additional strand, because I think it's also important for us to take into consideration, if we're gonna make changes to either the times of the year that we're going to meet, to take into consideration that an important part of our work is making decisions on what we're gonna cover in agendas, and our student outcomes-focused governance work will have implications. So, for instance, if we're gonna have a monitoring calendar in the fall and in the spring, when are we gonna do that work? If we're going to shift, and tonight is probably not a good example, toward more student outcomes items on the agenda, then in theory, we would spend less time on adult outputs and more time on student outcome stuff. So, I think we also really have to make some difficult decisions on what we're covering in the agenda, right? And so, if we're gonna focus on student outcomes, then we could figure out, okay, maybe we don't need three workshops, but in lieu of us not having board goals, colleagues, board guardrails, and holding ourselves accountable to what we want these data presentations to include, it adds to my reservation of us reducing number of meetings. I mean, it could be that if in the summer, hey, we got our board goals developed, they're in alignment with our data presentations, our board monitoring, our quarterly monitoring, our interim goals, then I would, you know, welcome revisiting, because we're also then looking at how we're using our time effectively. What I don't want is three days, or us going into nine or 10 o'clock in the evening without first addressing, having a more, an agenda that more clearly reflects student outcomes, you know, then our discussions, maybe we have shorter meetings, maybe we have more meetings, shorter meetings, maybe we dedicate one meeting a month to decision-making, another meeting to kind of discussions like this. So, I do think that our shared governance and focus on student outcomes would help to facilitate the difficult decision on either reducing meeting or changing meeting times, or how often we're gonna have board workshops. So, I would be very hesitant to make changes to our, significant changes to our, the number of meetings a year, since we haven't done that shared governance work yet.
I appreciate that aspect of it, because for the last two and a half years, almost three years now, we have been working on board governance, and we are working on shifting our focus, including the agenda, on student outcomes. And I think you're absolutely right. When you look at the, you know, monitoring calendar, budget calendar, everything, we have to have an opportunity to make sure all those align and that we're allowing time to accommodate those aspects of the work that we do. And I hear that you're also challenging us to get that work done, to put our nose to the grindstone and as a board, continue working on our goals and guardrails. I know we have somebody else to work with to help us out, but I accept that challenge. And I know that, I know that we are all here for the same reason. We all want to improve student outcome, and that needs to be the focus and the reason we do what we do. So, with that being said, we will move on to...
May I ask one clarifying question, not to open another, but, Dr. Benitez, was there anything about time that you just wanted to put in the mix while we're on this topic?
Yes, so, it actually relates to a previous, I don't remember if I did it in a board report, or as part of a discussion on another item on the agenda. So, we have heard from our public around the possibility of starting at a later time, like 5:30, but if we did that, I think the point that I raised was, could we pilot some kind of child watch, Dr. Baker? I know that we have families that oftentimes are not able to make board meetings and/or other board-related meetings, and I know that at some, we do provide child watch. So, again, if we are looking deeper at when we're meeting, how often we're meeting, that perhaps we could explore a pilot child watch, see if we get more parent engagement, right? See if that's the reason why, you know, families are not able to attend, particularly doing budget engagement time, because that's when we have a lot of public comment, and if we're gonna extend public comment, I think it would behoove us to provide support for families that are gonna spend some time with us. The other piece of that is related to time. We have in the past, a number of us, not just me, I don't want to take full credit for this, through our budget engagement conversations, explored the option of perhaps, not every meeting, Dr. Baker, but rotating a meeting in our respective areas and/or at different venues at our areas. One of the things that we have talked about in the past is that this, for good or for bad, this location isn't accessible to everyone in our communities, and we have had success for different events and different meetings, when we meet in our respective areas, whether that be at a school's auditorium or cafeteria, that we get a good turnout, right? So, perhaps we could be strategic in considering whether it's a board workshop or a meeting where we are having a student outcomes data presentation, to consider rotating our meetings. Again, I'm not suggesting for every single month, but perhaps every other month that we would have a meeting in one of our areas, and we could be strategic as to what we're covering on the agenda for that. And that's where my, if we wanted to adjust time for those meetings, that would come in. Since we're on the subject, Dr. Baker. I've brought this up before, I was a little bit frustrated today, not with our interpretation, with our process of sequential interpretation and translation. I think we do need, like, pretty soon, some transcripts from public comments that are made in languages other than English. I know that it's challenging for our interpreters to keep up, particularly when we don't have the comments ahead of time, and I worry that we miss in real time some of the comments that are being made in languages other than English. So, if it is possible, either when we do the captioning, Mr. Itzen, or what have you, if we could get forwarded transcripts with, and that would give our interpreters and translators more time for interpretation, so just in the spirit of our meetings.
Okay, I know, well, you mentioned maybe changing locations occasionally for our meetings. I know that one of the challenges is, yeah, is it's the whole logistics and the fact that we have our microphones and there are cameras and everything else, that's a big challenge.
Browning was pretty cool, though, wasn't it, Chair Craighead?
Yes, yes. So, hopefully, it won't be too much of an imposition for our staff to accommodate that. Let's see, so I believe we are on Consent Calendar B, so I need a motion for, oh, yeah.
Before you start, President Craighead, I recuse myself from Consent Calendar B as I have a potential conflict of interest under Government Code Section 1090 and 87100. Socile Gas provides services to Long Beach Unified School District and has in the last 12 months provided a donation to the nonprofit corporation Rancho Los Amigos Foundation, of which I am the CEO.
I move to approve Consent Calendar B.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion or further discussion on Consent Calendar B? Then I will ask our Board Secretary to take a roll call vote.
Okay, Member Benitez?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Miller, abstain? And Student Member Lopez, preferential vote?
Aye.
So, that passes 3-0, 3-0 with one abstention.
Thank you. Okay, now we're at staff report, and we're gonna be talking about student outcomes, so I will turn things over to Dr. C. Brown.
I'm glad that the discussion on calendar was, be sure to focus on time for student outcome reports. I believe this is episode 16 of our series this year so far. So, two topics to cover. One that's gonna be a little bit, I think, meatier, and it's a topic we... One, that's going to be a little bit, I think, uh, meatier and it's a topic we've covered a few times in the past. And, and this is kind of a revisit to current numbers. We're going to look at, uh, high school on track rates and specifically looking at students who are on track for A to G, right? So we talked about in the past, um, excellence and one of our measures of excellence is, is A to G on track as a way of, for students to qualify for four-year universities and for multiple post-secondary opportunities. Also, it's a number that seems to be more impacted by, uh, other, uh, things like the pandemic. Grad rate seems to be for us relatively stable and we've done a really good job as a district and our teachers have done excellent work elevating our grad rate. But before I start, I, I do need to say thank you to my team in research. Um, the data team worked hard on this. So, so what you're going to see is a few slides and it seems like we should be able to get these numbers quite easily. But what I'll tell you is that historically, A through G is a lagging indicator. And it's so lagging that usually when the state posts on the dashboard, it's 18 months after the kids have graduated. That's how long it takes to calculate it. And so our data has always been, how did the graduating class from a year and a half ago do? And that's about as fast as we know. Um, counselors using GUS have always been able to pull up, how are my students in this moment doing? But we've never archived that data. So the team led by Hamina, had to go back and actually use business logic to figure out based on transcript audits, where each kid was in A through G at different semesters in their life. And we went back, like pre-pandemic students, post-pandemic students. So what you're about to see, while only a few slides, uh, it represents hundreds of hours of staff time, uh, over the last few weeks. However, in doing that, they also built a system so that in the future, we can continue doing this much more easily. So we're now capturing, um, the progress of students moving through A through G and not waiting for that lagging indicator to be so lagging for us. It's still definitely based on grades. It still is not something that's going to be live. It's definitely at a semester to semester interval, but it's a lot better for us as a measure of high school on track. So I would be remiss if I hadn't thanked them because they really worked and some of them stayed really late right before flying to Hawaii to get this done. So thank you for them. So maybe, maybe not.
It's very hard to feel bad for somebody who was going to fly to Hawaii.
They didn't all fly to Hawaii. So there's some of them watching and they're like, uh, I'm not in Hawaii. Well, when the clicker works, I will switch to the next slide. All right. That's, nope, but that's okay. That's backwards. Oh, we're at the back. It's at the back. Ah, you guys are messing with me back there. All right. This is the front slide. Here we go. All right. So, um, also, Dr. Benitez, you will notice that in addition to colors, we've used dashed lines, dotted lines. We've tried to separate out the data as best we can throughout this. So I'll, I'll try to remember to say small dashes, large dashes, et cetera.
That is awesome because I saw the previous draft and I was so disappointed, Dr. Brown. Now I see the dashes and hyphens and I love it.
So when we start, we want to talk about current students or, or our most recent graduating classes of students in current. So, so what you're looking at in this slide right now is the on-track, A to G on-track rate by semester for the students who are currently in our high schools. So, um, the solid line that's at the top is the students who are going to graduate in June. Um, and you'll see that in their ninth grade year, they started 71% on track to A through G. By their 10th grade year, there were 78% on track. Now I will point out, and I'll do this again in the next slide. Whenever you see in A through G data, one class do very differently than the other class, that's the COVID year. So that happens to be the year that grades were pass no pass, not A through F. And those students, you see that they actually went up in A through G, whereas the three classes behind them, next year's graduating class and the following two actually drop from ninth to 10th grade. They then recover a little bit in the summer school and then drop again throughout 10th grade, recover a little bit in summer school until their end up point. What we're also seeing here is that each subsequent class is having a slightly depressed A through G on-track rate. A lot of inferences we could make. So to channel Mr. Otto, who's not with us, one of the inferences that, that really comes out is the younger the student was when COVID impacted their educational career, the more it's impacting them now in high school, right? So that impact of, of, um, lost opportunity, uh, is something that's carrying forward. But one of the things you've asked for is context. So this is where we are at this moment. And we also know we're doing some good interventions. We've seen like, for example, Browning, Browning's outperforming the ninth grade, A to G on-track with their BTSC work, right? Their, their breakthrough success community work. So we know that we've got some work to do, but we also know that with the SSI program that Dr. Camarino's got running, that there, there are some successes happening that we can pick up. The other beauty of looking at ninth graders now is these kids aren't gone yet. Now that we're looking at A through G, we, we actually can work with these students and make some improvements and get them there before they end. When you look at the pre-pandemic students and, and pre-pandemic or during pandemic students, you'll actually see that, that the pattern was completely reversed. So as we move from the class of 2019, which is the dotted line, to the class of 2022, which is the thin solid line, each subsequent class got relatively higher, especially incoming in their A through G on-track rate. You also see that they followed the exact same pattern that students are currently following, which is we start high in ninth grade, we drop down in 10th, we recover in summer school. Um, and remember, you'll see areas where classes didn't follow the pattern. So for example, uh, in the red circle right now, you'll see that the class of 2022, in their 10th grade year, actually elevated their A through G rate where everyone else's 10th grade year got depressed. That's COVID. And you see it slide right through the years. There it was for class of 2021. And then you can move on to the class of 2020, where in their senior year, which we've talked about before, English second semester seniors tends to be the class they drop. That's that little drop. They didn't, right? They stayed flat across their senior year. So, so you can see COVID kind of ripple its way through our A through G data and our on-track data for students. Um, and generally it was in a good way at the moment of, and in a depressive way immediately following, right? So it's one of those things that the indicator, um, is depressed because of COVID coming out. You also have to remember that A through G is an aggregate indicator, right? So it's not based on a single thing. It's not like it's a test score like SAT or a grade. It's a composite of all of a student's grades across their career, across multiple areas, right? Which of course made my team ask, so this is the trend we're seeing. What if we aggregated them? What if we looked at overalls? How does post-COVID and pre-COVID look? And here's how it looks. So what we did in these two charts here is we basically combined the classes of 2019 through 2022 and we combined the classes of 2023 to 2026, right? So a way to look at it is sort of like the pre-COVID classes and the post-COVID classes. And you'll see that they start kind of the same through grade nine. The current classes are slightly depressed, but then at grade 10, that depression becomes more pronounced. And then it stays the same from about grade 10 until a little recovery in grade 12. Um, now, not all of those post-COVID classes have hit grade 12 yet, so this is very preliminary data, right? Like some of those classes are in their freshman year first semester. So we don't know what their 12th grade year. But if it follows the trend of the other 12th grade years, it'll get even better. So when you look at this, the question really becomes, is there a hotspot? Like this is A through G, this is all their grades, this is anywhere kids getting a D or F, but is there a hotspot in area where we could maybe focus our efforts? Moving forward. So, so just as a reminder, we've talked about A through G before, but the areas, A is history, B is English, C is mathematics, D is lab science, E, foreign language, F is visual performing arts and G is college prep. So if you hear me say area A or area B, it's, um, and I tried to clean up in the slides as best I could to delineate it as history or English or math. Uh, but if I missed, I want to make sure that this key was in there for you to, uh, to follow up on, uh, as a reminder. Also remember that some of our grad requirements are actually in, in excess of the A through G requirements. For example, we in Long Beach require four years of math to graduate. But the big fundamental difference is that for A through G, you have to get a C or better in the class. Whereas for graduation, you have to get a D or better in the class. So you can have a really high grad rate and a really stable grad rate, but you can have an A through G rate that's not mirroring the grad rate because of those Ds. So when we look at the averages for the different groups, we find that the, the biggest impact, is in grade 10, which we already knew, and it's in English and history. So much like last time, when I told you I would have predicted math, this time I would have predicted English and math, but it's English and history that are the areas that are the most, um, impactful in students falling off of A through G on-track in their 10th grade year. And I know that, that we could probably speak to some of the stuff that goes on in 10th grade. Uh, it's the first year where they have to take a full schedule. It's the first year where history is actually taken for most students. Most students don't take history in ninth grade. So it's definitely not going to be a problem there where it shows up in 10th grade. It's also the first year that they have a completely full academic case, course load, where they don't have a period where electives or as many electives. Um, so that could be part of why we're seeing it. But, um, year over year, what you see is that, that in some areas, like, there's no change, right? So the percentage of students on track for science, pre-pandemic versus post-pandemic, statistically insignificant. No change. Whereas in 10th grade, history and English, you see an 11% depression in the number of kids who are on track in those areas, right? So when you go back and you see the depressed amount and you go, oh, it's about a 10% depression. And then you realize it's pretty much all in English and history that that depression is happening. So, um, a lot of our, I think, work that elementary is doing on literacy is going to pay dividends with A through G in the future because that seems to be the area where we're coming off, which if you think back to episodes one through four of our work, literacy was one of the areas that was most impacted by COVID for our students. So the fact that it's showing up in the A through G rates and the two courses that have the most literacy in them is probably not unexpected at this moment. Um, when we look at it across, uh, ethnicities, we see that same depression pattern across all of the ethnic groups, uh, pre-pandemic, post-pandemic, it's mimicking the overall pattern. Across all the groups, it's between a two and a 5% depression for pretty much everybody. And I, I do want to remember, remind everyone that, that the post-pandemic group, not all of them have graduated yet. So we could show this data in two years and it would actually be better, right? Cause they can elevate. None of those kids are gone. But when you look at by area and by ethnicity, we start to see the same pattern. So, um, when you look at where our different ethnic groups are struggling with staying on track, it's history in ELA. And that same sort of, um, brutal fact shows up again, right? Which is, uh, the groups that we know historically have struggled in our system have the largest declines year over year compared to the other groups. I will point out that this is not comparing subgroups to each other. This is comparing a subgroup to itself, right? So when we look at the African-American subgroup and we look at the, the negative 11 in history, that's African-Americans in the post-pandemic cohort compared to African-Americans in the pre-pandemic cohort. So that's not them compared to another subgroup, right? That's subgroup compared to subgroup, um, over time. So you'll see that, that, um, that, that's still areas A and B that we have the, the focus on. However, despite some of the, the depression we see here, there is some interesting data inside of it. And so I have to credit, uh, one of my analysts, Jason, for, for digging a little deeper. He asked the question, how off-track, right? So you could be off-track in one area, you could be off-track in five areas, you could spend two years off-track or you could spend one semester off-track and the end result is you're off-track. But it makes a difference, right? If we're going to think about intervening with students, students who are off-track for one semester somewhere in their career are very different than students who spend eight semesters off-track, right? Or not, or, uh, six semesters off-track or are off-track in five areas versus one area, right? So it was interesting. Um, and so what he looked at is in 2122, he just looked at the students who successfully met A through G and he said, how many of them were off-track? How many of those kids were A through G all the time from the moment they entered to the moment they left? And how many they fell off? And 21% of them fell off at some point. So 21% of the kids who ultimately met A through G fell off at some point. But, uh, later, sorry, 21% in the 1819 cohort, but in the, or no, 21% in the current cohort. It's 28% in the 1819 cohort. So that's actually a lower percentage than pre-pandemic. So in other words, of the kids who made it, more of them made it all the way without falling off and coming back. That means less of them needed some sort of support to stay A through G, which is an interesting data point, right? It means we've got kids who are closer to that middle ground is, is a little more middle ground. And, and actually 12% of them were off-track for five or more semesters during 1819, but only 6% of them were off-track for five or more semesters in 2122. So of the kids who made it, you had less of them falling off-track ever. And when they did, they were off-track for less time. So in other words, they were able to recover faster or didn't need recovery at all, right? So, so that points to, we have some opportunity here to be able to get some of the students who were almost making it to be able to make it, right? We have kids who aren't missing by as much. Unfortunately, it's an all or nothing metric at the end. So we got to get them there, but it means they're closer to getting there. And it says periods up here, it means semesters. And the reason it's 10, you might do some math in your head and go four years of high school, two semesters. That's only eight semesters, Chris. Your math is wrong. Uh, we counted summer school periods, because we know that students recover A through G in summer school periods. So that's if you had the, the question of how I got 10 out of eight, it's summer schools. Uh, that's how I got it. Um, so we looked at EL students too. And overall, um, not much change in EL students. Uh, pre-pandemic, they were, uh, meeting A through G at a 10% less rate than their non-EL peers, same, uh, after. But when we look at EL students who ultimately did not meet A through G, we see a very different trend. So current students are actually starting on and staying on track at a much higher rate. And then falling much more precipitously at the very end to end up almost exactly where previous groups ended up. But, but that does have consequences for intervention, right? So what you see at the solid line is current or the most recent graduating class ELs, right? So they came in, 40% of them were on track. The graduating class pre-pandemic, only 23% of them started on track and after ninth grade semester one, right? So, and they stay higher all the way to the very end, which means if we were going to think about interventions, you have more ELs who are on track later in their high school career than we did previously, which means you could actually have more of an impact on getting them to, to meet that all or nothing, um, benchmark at the end. So it's like, again, an interesting piece of, of sort of good, uh, progress hidden inside the, the overall depression due to the pandemic. And then also interesting, while most other groups saw depression or no change, for non-special ed students, actually there's a pretty significant statistically shift in special ed students. So the proportion, proportion of special ed students meeting A through G is, uh, about 8% higher post-pandemic than pre-pandemic. Uh, 8% is a sizable jump. If you think about, for a long time, the district's goal was to get to, I think, 60% A through G and we got to like 58, right? So when you think about that being the, the overall metric for the district and you see a subgroup jump 8% in two years, that's a pretty statistically significant group. And they're the only group who did that sort of post-pandemic. For Mr. Otto, if he's watching at home, I have no inferences on that one, other than the, uh, special ed teachers and the Office of School Support Services are, are doing a bang-up jihad and they're, they're really working with their students and their teachers. And those special ed teachers deserve a round of applause because that's, uh, tremendous data for them to, to improve it by 8%. That's the only inference I have on that one. So kind of a brief, I know I went fast, but I figured there'd be some questions and we could go back to any slide and look at them. So, but before we jump into summer school and sort of part two, I wanted to stop at A through G. So that's sort of where we are. Um, depending on your board goals and guardrails moving forward, we could definitely do semester by semester, uh, executive summaries of A through G on-track. So we could see how, how students are progressing by subgroup, by grade, by anything moving forward. It's a lot easier for us, um, just depending on how it aligns to the board goals you guys end up with. But that's where A through G on-track is. And, uh, pause there and open up to questions or, um, comments for other data you would like to see to go with this in the future.
Colleagues, questions, comments? Mr. Miller?
And I think this is probably going to be talked about when we talk about summer school. But it was just more of like a surprising comment. So I was, I'm looking at slide number nine when it, uh, it's the A through G cohort comparison. And, yes. And as you stated, these periods are essentially semesters slash summer school. And so for me, and once again, this is where I'll lean on your, um, being the subject matter expert here. I always have made the assumption that when students go into summer school, it is to become more A through G ready. I did not consider a situation where somebody could go to summer school and then not be A through G ready. So I assumed that at these periods where, when we're looking at the summers, that they would always be in the reverse, like it would always be a, a rise in A through G. Yeah, yeah. Or no change.
So we definitely see a rise. Um, so two things about this slide. So, so if I go back to, these slides, you'll see that, if I go back one more, you'll, you'll see that generally there is a recovery in summer. Sadly, not every student passes in summer school or finishes in summer school and we can talk about that in a minute. But yeah, there is generally a recovery in A through G on-track through summer school. The other part of summer school, and, and Dr. Camarino could probably speak to this also, is a lot of students who take summer school and are prioritized for summer school, it's a grad recovery, right? So you got an F. So as a student who earned a D, you can choose to take summer school. You can choose not to take summer school, whereas a student who got an F, if you need that class for graduation, you're taking. you're taking summer school to recover the graduation credit. You may also recover A through G if that was the only class you were off. But if you got D somewhere else, you might not recover. And then for slide nine, the reason the numbers are, some of those percents are pretty low is you got to remember not every kid takes A through G. So for kids who weren't off or who recovered via Apex or dual enrollment or some other methodology, you know, like Cabrillo has credit recovery during the school year. Some of the, a lot of the high schools do, right? So then they can either recover during, so they weren't off before summer, the status quo, they stayed. And that's the bulk of kids. So about three quarters of our, all of our high school students don't take summer school. So it kind of changes those numbers a little. Thank you.
Ms. Lopez.
No, I think I just, I just wonder if the numbers would be better if kids had more access to counselors. I know we have been talking about or we've been hearing from counselors, but I just wonder if there's an impact to these numbers with the limited time counselors have for meeting with students. This is my comment.
I can speak to that. We have deliberately since 2020 recalibrated the work that our counselors are doing with our students who need to either make up credits because the common language that we heard across the district was D for diploma. So we calibrated it out to be A through G. So even though A through G has been around for a while, we really are focusing on A through G versus D for diploma. So a lot of our teams, I won't just say counselors, but teachers too, right? Because they're all a part, they're all an integral part of how our students recover, it's relationships. So when our students have those relationships with our staff, and I think the pandemic is showing the lack of relationship building that we've had with our students and knowing that they can go out and get this information or how they access information, it really is about, if you look at slide number nine in particular, that's the piece where we really have focused on pushing the A through G narrative through the use of Apex, which is credit recovery. And one of the things that I think is really powerful to understand, and we're getting the message out to our students, is if a student takes English one, two, that's ninth grade English. English one is the first semester, English two is the second semester. If a student gets a D or an F in English one, they can actually take Apex second semester as they're taking English two or the second half of ninth grade English to help catch up. So a lot of our schools are working towards building that into their master schedules. So we're really repurposing the way that we do build our master schedules for support to have tier one and interventions during the school year versus relying on summer school. So again, the big push again is to move those students out of having the D for diploma, but more be A through G ready.
Dr. Benitez.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. C. Brown. And please thank the entire team for the effort that they put into this. As I think about it more, I recognize the countless hours that went into putting these together. So if we could start backwards, Dr. Brown, on slide 10, which is your EL, A through G cohort comparison.
Sure.
So I'm going to anchor, and then I'll just work my way back to the subgroup disaggregation. I'm going to anchor my comments around these opportunity gaps, right? The equity-centered sort of framing that you provide for us. But I don't want to lose sight that a big reason that this data matters, why we're even doing A through G in the first place, is connected to our broader Long Beach Promise conversations, right? A through G is about college and career readiness. It has implications for our Long Beach Promise conversations. So for instance, if we're using sort of the C or better as an indicator versus a D, because then that, yes, you graduate, but a D doesn't get you A through G completion. And our local university is not accepting students who only get a C average, then it has broader implications for us. We heard Dr. Elijah Sim say, you need to get some As and Bs in there, right? So I want to, I want to stress how important, what lens we're using A through G completion and the implication that that has on our Long Beach Promise conversation. So having said that, just some technical questions, Dr. Brown. So EL students, how many high school students are EL reclassified? What's the percent of ELs here, just to give me a sense of what this EL data means?
You know, I don't have it memorized off the top of my head, so I'd have to look. I will tell you that the EL data falls every year. So that's one of the things that you see in the data because every single year, ELs get reclassified into ARFEP. So by the time you get to the senior class, you have a much, much, much smaller number of ELs. And because reclassification is based on performance, you've generally pulled the A through G meeting EL students out of EL because by the very fact that they're meeting A through G and performing very well, what you get left in the EL subgroup with is students who, because of whatever reason, are still unable to reclassify. And it's also tied. So it's always going to be very, very, very hard to have a high A through G rate with EL students because by definition, as soon as they have A through G reclassification, they'll be reclassified and they'll no longer be EL students. So you always see the data. I think my point with this slide more was in ninth grade, though, looking at where we're starting them. The true metric here would be honestly that they all reclassify. And then of ARFEP students, of which many of our high school students are ARFEP students. I'd have to look, but it's over 50% of our high school students are ARFEP. Then you could look at the A through G rate of that. So one of the things that we're starting to do in our office is we're having sort of two categories. We have EL and then we're starting to calculate things as ever EL, right? So were you ever an EL? And then we'll look at that way. We didn't quite get there with this one, but we will get that data for the ever EL student.
Thank you. Thank you for affirming that. And I know we have more to come with Dr. Kael on our reclassification changes. Okay, so if we can then move back, and I think EL is a good sort of place to move back to slide eight. Is there any inference as to why it is that it's happening with history and ELA, Dr. C. Brown?
Well, I wouldn't lean on my colleagues if they would like to jump. And I will tell you that some of the other data, like I said, some of the other data we've talked about shows that for our students, especially for our students of color, the area that tended to be the most impacted during remote instruction was literacy and areas around literacy. So when you think about that as the area that was the most impacted, not that math wasn't impacted, it absolutely was, but it seemed to be less negatively impacted. And then you look forward and you follow these students out two years and they're now, instead of in middle school, they're in high school. And we're looking at their A through G rate. And the two courses that they're struggling the most with to get the A through C and hopefully the As and Bs for the College Promise are history and math, or history and English. I mean, the courses where strong literacy skills are the most critical to passing those courses. So that would be my first inference is that we know that COVID impacted literacy. Well, I think it's one of the reasons that we've done and are continuing to do a lot of work in elementary school around literacy moving forward to try and mitigate that impact. I think that's the inference I can make. We could explore other options, but I'd have to start getting focus groups with teachers and getting some more non-quantitative data.
Yeah, here's why that's intriguing. I mean, that even, even that notion is intriguing to me because if we look at slide seven, we see that there is almost a 30% gap in our highest A through G completers versus, you know, we have roughly what 11, 12% African-American students, above 55% Latinx students, yet our Asian students, our Filipino students, our white students. I mean, that's very intriguing to me. You know, we have roughly the same percent of our Asian, Asian-American students as we do as our black students, yet we have disproportionately more Latinx students, roughly about the same percent of our white students, African-American students and Asian, Asian-American students. So I would love to sort of get into the nuances of the gap. Even when, as you pointed, there are some bright spots, the equity gap persists, right? We started off at almost 30% difference and we end up at, if not 30% higher than 30% difference. So to me, this is perfect timing to figure out for that 23 to 26 cohort, what's working, what's not working? Interventions, I know we'll get to summer school because it is super troublesome just in terms of the proportion of students that are tilting this data one way or another. More than half of our students are Latinx students. You know, they're roughly 1 to 2% different than our African-American students that are 11, 12% of the district. So am I, am I capturing the essence of that graph in alignment with what you're trying to share, Dr. Brown?
Yeah.
Okay.
You are.
Okay. Okay, I wanted to make sure of that because the big one for me is then the inference that COVID has a big impact particularly on our students of color. If we're working off the premise that all ninth graders, and I'm using all universally here, start off A through G default, is are we still working off that inference?
Sure.
I think there's a combination of things that may be going on, and I don't want to conflate on my end, the 10th grade ELA history component with the big drop-off after ninth grade.
Yeah, so I think, I think I know where you're going to go with this. So there's two things. So what I would tell you is this huge drop-off you see here and then the subsequent gap, I think, is where you're going to, right? So if all ninth graders start on track and then we know that we get to this point where 47% of our Hispanic and African-American students are on track, but 70% of our Asian-American students are on track, that gap is not what I was referring to about the COVID impact. That gap existed pre-COVID.
Yes.
It exists post-COVID. That gap is systemic and it's something that we have to deal with and we have to start taking action, right? That's the systemic gap that we're going to work on. The COVID impact is when you look at African-Americans now versus the same group, African-Americans pre-COVID. That's this slide. That negative 12% as opposed to for Asian-Americans where it's negative 9%, still a big number both ways. That's the COVID impact because that's Asian-Americans compared to Asian-Americans, African-Americans compared to African-Americans, right? So that's, that removes the systemic drop that already existed and still exists and just looks at the, in addition to the systemic drop, here's the COVID drop in A through G. So that's why I tried to make sure that those were subgroup to subgroup comparisons so that they didn't hide the fact that that systemic drop was already there. So I said, I think there is still some brutal facts here, right? That there is that drop that we have to deal with. COVID impacted everybody and it had a greater impact in those two areas on those students. Now, marginally stronger and given the fact that those student groups aren't necessarily the largest and some of our ninth graders haven't gone past ninth grade, statistical significance was not inferred, which is why I didn't say significant, but it's the same pattern pre and post.
I so appreciate that, Dr. Brown. And I know, I know that you weren't doing that, but oftentimes we hear of the negative impacts of COVID, lost learning on COVID, and I wanted to make sure that we didn't lose. And you're highlighting the point. We have a deep systemic issue here, right? Whether COVID happened or not and what impacts it had, they're indisputable. The fact of the matter is it's the same subgroups that we're talking about. We could do pre-COVID 10 years, post-COVID, how many years? That's the more concerning piece of it. The nuance of COVID illustrates that, but it doesn't take away that we have a huge systemic, I don't care how we cut this, all right? And to your point, if we're thinking about board goals, colleagues, and we see naturally here that there's a 1, 2% improvement or accelerated learning, that's one of the pieces to me that I do not want that to be lost on us, right? That no matter how we cut this, the groups that we are most trying to develop these successful interventions with Dr. Camerino are the same ones that we were talking about in 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021.
2012.
Right? All, all of that got exacerbated by COVID. But I do hear a vibe nationally and statewide around the impacts of COVID and it sort of conflates, yeah, that's why black students aren't doing as well because of COVID. No, 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 no. Black students were not doing, we were not doing right by black students prior to COVID. And so to me, that's, that's what I really am challenging our teams here for at the level, office level. What are we doing specifically for our Latinx, our black students, our students that we knew prior to COVID? COVID magnified that. And so that's, that's where I'm going with the summer school and summer interventions, right? That there's nothing here, because it's all preliminarily, but three years down the line, five years down the line, I want to be able to say, hey, we had some things that worked. We had some things that maybe didn't work. We're still tweaking it. It's not a universal one-size-fits-all, but I don't want that to get lost that we start sort of saying, oh, that's because of COVID. Oh, yeah, that was a COVID year. Oh, A through G rates went down for those groups, COVID. No, it's always been that way. COVID just magnified and exacerbated that. Thank you. I wanted to make sure that we, I had a good understanding of what you were trying to present here.
Yep, you had it nailed.
Good.
And I think that's a good segue to summer school, right?
Yeah, although I think after that discussion, summer school, my discussion here might be slightly disappointing. So I'm just going to be fully transparent. Teams spend a lot of time on A through G, so they're still working on some of the summer school outcomes. It's also a lot of students and it's not directly tied to anything necessarily. So we can talk about A through G and we do see the A through G recovery. So summer school, we'll talk some of the benchmarks from last year so that it gives us an idea moving forward into like the kind of support we would like to provide. So summer school really broken up into two sort of sections for the purposes of research. There's high school summer school, which is credit recovery, A through G recovery, sort of the traditional understanding of summer school. And then there's K8 summer school, which is SEAL, right? Which is the Supports, Enrichment and Accelerated Learning Program, right? Did I say that right? So SEAL. Summer. I like support. We're going to stick with supports because it supports students. So and it supported about 6,500 students last year. So when you think about support to the community and support to students, you have 6,500 students who had someplace to go and something to do all summer to continue their work, right?
Which I want to pause on that just to thinking about something that you said, Dr. Benitez, which is thinking about the experience for all of our students, which happens during the 180 days that all students are in school in comparison to how many students attend summer enrichment or acceleration programs. So just to set a context for that, it's so important that we think about the 180 days and then after-school programming and tutoring that goes with those 180 days before we think about summer. So just, I'll add that in before you keep going.
So it broke down to about 4,600 students in the K5s and about 1,700, a little over, almost 1,800 students in six through eight. And when we think about who was served, so in elementary schools, about two-thirds of those students were students who pre-summer were scoring at one or more grade levels below, right? So it was not distributed across the community evenly of students. It was, you know, targeted to support those students who were ending the year a little bit below grade level and that's, they made the majority. Now, students who were above grade level also attended SEAL, but they were about a third of the students as opposed to the two-thirds of the students who were below grade level. And for middle school, it's about the same. And actually, for middle school, you actually saw a lot of students in the middle school SEAL program who were actually two or more grade levels below. And so I think in your board packet, you received a one-page or handout that kind of has the breakdown of how many students are one or two or more grade levels below who attended summer SEAL for that. That being said, we didn't do a pre-post test for summer school. Didn't feel right to the kids. So I can't say that they came out of summer scoring drastically different. And remember when they took I-Ready the very next year in the fall, was comparing them to a different grade level, right? So if they were one more grade level behind and they came into the next year one grade level behind, that's actually progress because one grade level behind in third is very different than one grade level behind in fourth. It means you're actually on. So not, not an apples-to-apples comparison. So I don't have a growth rate comparison across SEAL yet. Also, the program is very different in different sites. So there's not something where it was one thing targeted at one particular academic growth area. So we could look at one academic growth area because it was so varied. We just look at holistically how many kids were supported by the program. High schools are seeing declining summer school enrollment. They're down to only about 6,700 kids, so the size of a normal district in a summer school. And I'm going to qualify this. 6,700 students signed up for and enrolled in summer school during the spring. Doesn't mean all 6,700 went to summer school. So 72% of them then attended summer school. 10% of them were inactive, which means they left our system, right? They were not enrolled with us during the summer, they were somewhere else and maybe didn't return in the fall. And then 17% of them enrolled in summer school and then didn't show up either. They just didn't want to take it. Or I like to believe, because I'm an optimist, that they enrolled thinking they weren't going to pass a class second semester and then they pulled it off and they passed the class at the end of the year and didn't need to take summer school and so didn't show up. I'm going to stick with that until someone can prove me wrong and you're welcome to have the data set. So and the enrollment really looked as you would expect, right? The schools that have the biggest enrollment had the biggest summer school enrollment. So Wilson had about 1,300 kids and Cabrillo had about 600 kids, right? So it kind of followed enrollment patterns. Demographically, it was a little bit different, right? So our Latinx and our black students attended summer school at slightly higher rates than their overall percentage of the population, which again, goes back to those systemic gaps that we know exist, Dr. Benitez. um, which again goes back to those systemic gaps that we know exist, Dr. Benitez. They tend to not get A through Cs, slightly overrepresented, um, groups, and so they tend to be in summer school in slightly overrepresented groups. Uh, interesting to note, th- this year, um, this goes to your question, uh, Mr. Miller, about how could you go to summer school and not end up A through G, right? So, um, in grades ten, eleven, and twelve, students in summer school, about, uh, seventy-two percent of them successfully completed summer school. So, see, you're better, moved on. In grade nine, it was only fifty-eight percent who finished summer school. So for some reason, this last year, the ninth graders, um, either didn't complete the summer school course, or didn't complete it successfully, whereas the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders did. So I would expect when we look at next year's A through G, we might not see for the ninth grade, um, that recovery spike so much. And, and it wasn't as pronounced as some of the other grades were, so it'll be interesting to watch that in the future and see how. Now, it could be that they know the Apex is coming, it could be that they think they've got three more years to be able to get it done, whereas a senior knows is it for me, I gotta get this done now, I mean, there's that, that urgency that could live there. Um, and again, as we're rolling out more and more Apex, and more and more schools are doing the, hey, you can catch up this next semester, not need summer, you could see ninth graders going, yeah, it's okay, I'm gonna go do that, maybe just not finish the summer school and take the incomplete. So, uh, that was the only overall trend that we really saw, was that that group looked slightly different than the other three grades for completing summer school. And that, that's pretty much it for summer school, so you got about twelve thousand students being supported in the district, uh, over summer school. Their attendance rates are slightly higher, um, after completing summer school, but not statistically significantly higher. And if we have any other specific data point you want to look at, once we get to, like I said, your board goals and, and the impact of summer school on a thing, we can definitely look at that. But summer school, the program is very, very, very varied, and for high school students, it's very content-specific, um, and credit recovery-specific. And that's it, I think. Nope, wrong way. Yeah, that's it. Now we're at the end. So, summer school questions, future thoughts on summer school, things you'd like to see?
I guess in an ideal world, it would be nice to know exactly how summer school benefits our, our kids, and, um, I, I know we don't have that in this packet, but if you're asking about future, you know, future questions we might have, I think that would be something to consider.
And we can look academically, we can look socially-emotionally, we can look attendance discipline. When we look across broad programs, and we look across multiple factors, we'll pretty much always find something that went up and something that went down. So we, you know, as we tighten it on the goals, we'll be able to tighten it on exactly where we want to think that. I think the, the other part with summer school is remember, especially K eight summer school, is, is it's not singular in its focus, which means it won't be singular in its outcome, so it becomes hard to draw, um, correlation lines between a program that's, you know, uh, different at different sites to a specific outcome of students, other than they were supported through the summer.
Uh, Mr. Miller?
You already asked the question. I'll reserve my comments. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Dr. Benitez.
Dr. Brown, what does it mean when, uh, white students are no-shows or inactive at a higher rate than other?
You're going back to the draft. I, I don't know.
I'm not asking a specific question, I'm just sort of, what does that mean?
So, so, uh, some of the background data, right? We, we do know that, um, in high school, our white students were actually more likely to not complete summer school than, um, our Latinx and African-American students. I don't know why.
Okay. For future?
We can, we can ask them.
Okay, so, Dr. Camerino, I'm in the tenth grade. Juanito Benitez, and I get an F in one or two classes. Uh, in the spring, I'm in the second semester of that class, and I can simultaneously, uh, take the first semester on Apex. Sort of walk me through, where do I end up, what do I gotta do? What kind of support or advisement do I get, or is it worth it for me to go to summer school and not show up, or be inactive, or only be fifty-something percent successful? Sort of walk me through that ninth, tenth grade scenario, Dr. Camerino.
So, so the tenth grade dilemma is that if you look at the schedule that students take in tenth grade, and I show this previous slide during, uh, our, our, uh, looking at A through G, and, uh, with the courses our students take, they take an English class, a math class, a science, a history, PE, and typically world language. So there really is no room for electives when you think about what our tenth graders do. So that added stress of academic and meeting the needs, and having to pass PE, or they have to take it again in eleventh grade, really puts a burden on some of our students, especially academic, when they're, whether, how much of their preparation comes from middle school, ninth grade, or where, where they're coming from. The communication then becomes the amount of time that we're able to offer Apex to our students, and again, it goes back to relationships. We have to do a better job of communicating through teaching staffs and everyone else, right, admin and counseling staff, of what, what opportunities we have available, and, again, the work that we're doing behind the scenes are really providing a robust master's schedule, so that within our pathways, these interventions, tier-one supports, are done during the year. So that challenge and that availability is there. So we ha, we offer Apex to a lot of our students who have caught on to knowing that they can do Apex during the school year, but not all of our students know that right off the bat, right? So that's part of our, how do we have these conversations with our students, whether it's in, uh, when they go to link crew in ninth grade, or interventions that we have, uh, school-wide, or how our schools have intervention conferences with our with our parents, after the first semester, what goes out and gets communicated, how much of that information do we know the parents and students know about what's going on? So the challenge is really there, because we know that after ninth and tenth grade, if the students are getting Cs or higher, they're really good, right? Ninth and tenth grade is really the challenging two years of ensuring that our students are successful, not just graduating, but also, also being A through G. So really, it's about the communication, the relationships that we're building. But more importantly, again, it's that whole recalibrating of the D for diploma versus A through G. That was really a, a big narrative that's been going on five years ago plus, right? That, that, and still something that we're still talking to with Dr. Kim Johnson, who's meeting with all of our counselors on a regular basis to really push the A through G narrative versus the D for diploma narrative.
Okay, any, um, yes, Frania?
Honestly, I wanted to comment on how, if I were a ninth-grade student, and I had the option to choose Apex or summer school, I would never consider summer school. I went through summer school this past, um, summer. It was a really hard time, especially for my circumstances, which is PE, and I was going through a personal, um, I was taking physical therapy for a car accident. And if I were a ninth-grade student, I simply wouldn't just go to summer school, especially since it's not really forced, like Apex, and just, I don't know, like, take the necessary steps to just take Apex, have that opportunity instead. Summer school really isn't appealing to me, um, because Apex is more forced, it's in your schedule. Unlike summer school, the commitment, and also the FOMO, I guess, that you experience as a student, not having that little vacation time. It's a little bit of a step back.
Thank you. It helps provide a definitely some context for why our ninth-grade students didn't complete summer school at the same rate as their older peers. So, there you go.
I got a question for you then. How were you introduced to the idea that you had to go to summer school?
My counselor, I had a really close relationship with my counselor, and as part of, part of my graduation requirements, I needed to take, um, either summer school or Apex, but I wasn't aware of Apex, and I only had one semester of, um, PE I had to fulfill, as I didn't pass my sophomore year.
And so that was, I, I kind of made that assumption there. And as a student who went through the Longmont Unified School District that also had to go to summer school, I too was introduced or made aware of me being, let's call it out of compliance, from being A through G-ready by a school counselor. And so, though we've already discussed how there's some previous philosophical, uh, issues with the way that, uh, students addressed what academic success looked like, uh, one of the things that we've heard from public comment, we've heard from two folks sitting here at the dais, is the impact of school counselors to student success as a whole. And so if we are going to talk about, how do we change this narrative in regards to having our students focus on, uh, career development and academic achievement? The support system, the infrastructure of having someone who has a second set of eyes, a second set of ears to support those teachers, is a necessity. And so as we've consistently see our counselors show up to these meetings, and the bright red shirts, and speaking, uh, to a number of strong topics around the importance of their role, uh, I can't help but hear the undertones of their role in every component of this discussion that we're having today.
I wanted to comment on a little bit on Mr. Miller. I only, uh, thank you. I only had a close relationship with my counselor on my junior year, and if it wasn't for my counselor, I probably wouldn't have done a lot of things that I'm now, um, regarding probably scholarships, um, school activities, and also my requirements for graduation, because I'm not really, I'm gonna confess, I'm not the type of student to be on top of things, especially even my assignments. My counselor has been the person who really has pushed me, supported me, um, to get to where I am now, where I'm actually eligible to graduate. When I was in a spot that was really bad, um, facing my hit that I had for my sophomore year online. Yeah, if it wasn't for that person, I don't know.
Thank you, student, for, um, remember, uh, Lopez, because again, I'm going to go right back to what I said earlier. I think key to a lot of, of these outcomes have to do with the lack of access many of our kids have to counselors. So I too think this is, um, should be a priority for us, to ensure that, um, kids have more counselors, they have access to them, and, um, you know, that we make them a priority in our schools.
Okay, anything further, any more questions for Dr. C. Brown? Thank you, thank you to your team, um, for all the time and effort they put into that, and that you've put into that as well. Let's see, I will put my glasses on so I can actually see where we are. So, um, oh, short recess? Can we try and have like just five minutes? Can everybody just be real quick and be back in five minutes, so we don't prolong the? I don't want to be right on my ten to eleven, uh, projection there earlier. So five minutes, we will return at, um, eight fifty-two? Seven fifty, oh my gosh, seven fifty-two, holy cow, seven fifty-two. It's, uh, it's time to get back to business, so we will, uh, we will move to agenda item fifteen point two, connecting community voices with budget programs, and we will start out with Ms. Renee Arcas.
Hello, and good evening, thank you for having, uh, me here today. We're really excited to continue our journey on connecting community voices with budgeted programs and student outcomes, and we've got some really great information today. Um, I have my, uh, budget engagement alignment team here that will introduce themselves as we move through the presentation. But we have, also have some guest joiners today, which is, uh, Dr. Jill Baker and Angie Gonzalez, that are gonna share some great information about programs within our system. Again, we want to kind of ground the board in our financial process and just give a- Again, we want to kind of ground the board in our financial process and just give a short update on where we are in the process. Last board meeting in March, we just approved the second interim, which was financials through January, and estimations from February through June. We are currently working on the budget now with all of the information from the community engagement and all of the information that we gather about our programs within our budget. And we're going to be bringing back to you in June, our budget adoption, our LCAP adoption, and our estimated actuals at that time. Again, kind of grounding the board, our community, everyone here in the room today, around our general fund expenses, which is the largest portion of our budget, and of course, our operating expenses, how we operate the district. Today, our team will be sharing programs in depth that touch several of these layers, including mostly our LCFF supplemental concentration portion, as well as our federal grants and entitlements. I will be taking a moment to delve a little deeper into something that we haven't done before, and it is where 50% of our general fund expenditures come from. So tonight, for my part, it will be all about the base.
I caught that, by the way.
No one? I mean, I could have done something, but I got my crew over here, thank you. Okay, well, I thought I'd ask for it, but I decided not to tonight. So, so we're going to talk about the base of, it's actually the base of the triangle, and it is really the base of our operations at Long Beach Unified School District. There's two large components that make up about 800 million of our 1.2 billion dollar budget. And we talk a lot about all of the other pieces. When we're talking about supplemental concentration, we're talking about the high need students, the English learners, the low income students and foster children, kind of that generate those dollars, and how we utilize those dollars to support those programs. We also have a little bit of concentration grants in there. So for our purposes, that's about 126 million dollars in our supplemental concentration. But guess what? About 675 million dollars of our general fund operating expenditures come from our base operations. And so I wanted to give an opportunity tonight to just kind of settle everyone in what we do before we start doing all of these magnificent things that we're able to add on with all of these extra dollars. So our LCFF base grant is strictly made up of dollars per students. We, as LBUSD, and this is different for other districts throughout the state, have a little over $9,000 for our 4th through 6th graders, up to $11,000 per attendance for our 9th through 12th graders. So the span of how much money that we make from our students attending school results in about 675 million in this budget year, as an example. All of these amounts are calculated on average daily attendance, and that's what makes up the piece of the base.
No trouble, Ms. Arcas.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it, we got there. David, I'm waiting, I'm just waiting. Okay, so this is the big slide that talks about the base operations and how our 675 million breaks down. A part of that, and it's basically laid out for you guys by our goals, that are in, our goals and actions that are in our LCAP. So this isn't something new, this is something that's been included with our LCAP, it's just we're giving a little bit more guide and telling a little bit more about what happens. So about 99 million of our base grant comes from plant maintenance and operations. So when you think of things like security, operations, custodial, grounds, maintenance, utilities, trash hauling, those are the type of things that we take care of. And I don't want to say we take for granted, but those are the type of things that we have to budget to maintain our operations and to, you know, accelerate our students, to keep things going. The second portion is in our community and ancillary services, and it's about $5 million. It includes our middle school, our high school athletics, our community permits, and our recreation aids. Basically, think of anything that we do that kind of supports community services, kind of outside the school day, little, little things like that. Our largest portion is made up in our instruction and our instruction-related services. So this is in our section of the LCAP, that is Section 3. We have about 330 million dollars. Again, these are this year's numbers, because that's what we have, this has not been updated to reflect, you know, any pending salary changes or anything like that. This is the budget that we developed, that we've been kind of sharing with you along the way, to give some continuity to what we're talking about. 330 million, those are teachers that provide classroom services for our 65,000 students. So if you're talking about just opening a classroom in a K through 3 situation with up to 30 students, we need base teachers to operate those classrooms. We talk a lot in all of our services about the additional things we do, literacy teachers, additional supports, music, all of those things. This is the piece that we need to operate our schools and open our classrooms. The other portion that we talked about is about 55 million, and it specifically covers related services. So if you think of your school sites, and just take a visual of your school site, and when you walk around, what do you see? You see principals, you see vice principals, you see non-academic site staff. This area also includes part of our, our Office of Curriculum and Development for base, our TOSSAs, our trainers, our coaches. These are the kind of things that you'll find in that area. The general admin section is quite a large section as well, it's about 162 million dollars. And this is our business services, our facilities, our human resources, just to name a few. This is part of the contribution to our special ed that the state and federal government doesn't serve. So over half of this portion of the LCAP and the base is made up of serving our special ed students beyond the amount that we get in our federal and state resources. And finally, we have our pupil services section, which is the 26 million that we devote similar to teachers. It talks about the base operation for such positions as counselors, nurses, specialized transportation, just things that we need to kind of serve our pupils, student placement services, et cetera. So that was my opportunity to tell you a little bit about our base operations, and I want to turn it over to Dr. Salazar to continue.
Good evening, so thank you Renee for sharing with us all about the base. And I'm happy to be here again, and I won't, oh, I'm, keep repeating that, because then you kill it, right? That's how it goes. But what I'm here to just remind us about is our engagement schedule. And so this schedule was designed by our team so that we can make sure that our community feels involved as we begin to develop the Local Control Accountability Plan, otherwise known as the LCAP. And as it continues to be developed with input and feedback that we've been receiving already, because we have met with some of our parent advisory groups, we continue to do so in a way that connects not only the feedback from the past, but also takes into account some of the work and engagement that has happened this year already, as we move into, and we are currently in Phase 2. So Phase 2 will really call for us to continue to engage with our parent advisory groups, and continue to make those connections between engagement efforts that have had, that we've had, done with great success last year and this year, which really is validating not only the needs that were identified by our community last year, but really aligned, and it's aligning with the hopes and aspirations through our visioning process from this year. And so it's, it's great to hear that those efforts are in alignment. That's to say, there's some great needs that were identified last year that continue to be hopes and aspirations for our community this year. And so we've been able to share that connection between the feedback and some of the budgeted programs. Before we move into Phase 3, and we heard some of that earlier today, we do want to share that, as a result of the feedback that we've already received from our parent advisory groups, and we've met with DCAC, with our D-LAC, we, as I said, academic support continues to be a hope, a need, and an aspiration for our community, as well as social emotional well-being, and enrichment continues to be some of their top priorities. And enrichment can mean many things, it can mean after-school enrichment, and it also means during the school day enrichment. And those continue to be priorities for our community. And so because we know that our community is asking to provide feedback now, even though the draft is not yet ready, we have some upcoming district-wide events that we will be leveraging so that we can begin to get that feedback, even though there's not a draft available. So what we're prepared to do, and what we will be doing, is not only continue to invite our community to our DCAC meetings in particular, which are held in the morning, but we will now hold them the evening portion of it virtually, because we've received some feedback that it would be very beneficial if we did so virtually. Of course, always taking into account our, making sure that we have language access for our, our community. So we have some upcoming dates, which can be found on our webpage, it's the lschools.net/lcap, LCAP. And so just to remind our community and everyone in the room that our upcoming DCAC meeting will be held on April 27th. Again, we'll send out flyers, and we'll communicate through all our webpage and School Messenger, as well as a DCAC meeting in May 20, on May 25th. We will also be sending out, and we have prepared for our upcoming Vision 2035 Community Installation, that will be happening this Thursday and on Saturday. We will have posters with QR codes so that for those specific categories, again, academic supports, social emotional well-being, and enrichment, if our community wants to give us specific feedback in any one of those three community, sorry, categories, they can do so through a survey that we're, that we'll have available at those events. So again, at our Vision 2035 Community Installation, I'm gonna make a quick plug for that. On Thursday, we will be at Browning High School in the evening, and we will be, Saturday morning, we will be at Bixby Elementary. And so we'll have QR codes, and we invite everyone to come, not only to see the, the, our Vision 2035 in its most final form, but also to encourage engagement in our budget engagement, in our budget development. And we will send copies of those QR codes to our sites to encourage in their spring events, because we know lots of schools after open house are, you know, kind of gearing up for not only testing, but are also planning for some great community events at their sites. So we also encourage our sites as support hubs to help promote engaging our parents in the LCAP development. So we will have QR codes as well as our, at our school sites, based on those categories. And then Phase 3 is when we will, and so at the end of Phase 2, on May 3rd, we will have our first draft of the LCAP available on our webpage. And that will be, again, for our community to be able to review, to, you know, and to, to preview it, to review it, and to provide some feedback. Because during Phase 3 is when we will be able to refine it, and our staff continues to refine it constantly, but then we will be prepared right before our adoption in June to provide some specific feedback to some of that response that's generated through our DCAC and our D-LAC. So that's just a review of our engagement schedule. But as we get into and dig a little deeper into some of our budgeted programs, it's important for us to bring back this visual. And so in this visual, it reminds us how the engagement efforts, along with the desired student outcomes, have served to inform the creation of programs and services. And so the budgeted programs, if you see on the left-hand side, just highlights what have been some of the engagement efforts and what that looked like. And then on the right-hand side, just keeping in mind student outcome goals that were designed not only by the board, but also priorities that were set by our senior team. And so those really help to inform programs and services. And so the budgeted programs and services aim to meet the student needs, and are aligned, again, with district vision and goal. And our team continues to provide updates, or will continue to provide updates as we come back and return to board meetings on the development, not only of the LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan, but any other budgets that need to be, any other plans that need to be created for the purposes of ensuring that programs and services are meeting the needs and are aligned with our district's mission and vision. So tonight, we look forward to highlighting two specific ways in which community voice informed the creation of budgeted programs, and with that, I'm going to hand it off now to Viva.
Good evening, I'm just going to be highlighting one of the programs, just so some, everyone does know, the LCAP is about a 100-page document that reviews a lot of the services that Renee talked about, and all the other programs that are listed, and all the great things that we do here at the district. We are here to just kind of, kind of hone in on some of the programs that we wanted to highlight. We highlighted some other ones in the previous one around social emotional learning, and so today is about raising student voices. We heard a lot even earlier today in public comments, and also even the student kind of representative that came out to talk about it. As you know, from the board's actually leadership as well, to add a student board member, Dr. Baker's efforts to visit every high school, and to engage with the students there, and our efforts as the budget engagement team and at Vision 2035, we've made sure that we incorporated students and student voices in our process. And we also had, during budget engagement, have asked our students to lead sessions and also give us feedback directly. So the comments that you're going to see up on the top is students saying, hey, can you please listen to us more? We have ideas, we have needs that we have at schools, and would you be willing to listen to us? And so basically, that's been kind of the key component of not just saying like, hi, we're here to listen to you, but also being very specific of what are some of the needs in your school sites. Dr. Baker will talk a little bit more about kind of what that experience has been like. I am also just here to highlight that in our visioning process, whether from our student, student graduate portrait to our adult portrait, and finally, our system portrait, it's been very clear that the students want adults to be champions for students. Students want to feel a sense of identity, a strong sense, a positive self, identity. And so for us, I think it's for a long-term goal as well, as also it is our short-term goal here today. And as, as we've mentioned, we're going to kind of break down and go through what, what this means. As, as you know, that, you know, the raising student voices is something that came from the student engagement, and also during our visioning process as well. How this actually ties with our student outcome goals is that, you know, it's, it's actually Goal 1, 2, and, which Goal 1 is, is towards students achieving below grade level will demonstrate one year of, one-year growth. I want to touch and actually connect Goal 1 and 2 together. When we know, when students have a deeper understanding of their self and personal identity and a sense of belonging, we know it leads to academic growth. And we all, not only just ourselves, but our students as well, we all want to be heard and feel valued, be seen, and including this, this makes, this, we want to make sure that we're incorporating our social emotional learning to increase our goal for academic growth. The last thing that we want to make sure that we connect all the dots is how then has it become part of our programs and services through our LCAP? And it's all part of the LASP, our Learning Acceleration Support Plan, and Pillar 3, an engagement and voice. We have made significant investments in Black Student Achievement Initiative led by Dr. Baker and Dr. Tiffany Brown. Where Everyone Belongs is a middle school program, and language accessibility is an integral part of increasing student voice. A specific example that I can give around how that, how it connects to student voice is when we did have our Student Summit at Long Beach City College, students, we had a couple of students use and actually ask for our interpreters to join them through the process, so they were able to participate. And so we are trying to ensure that not only all district events, but our students do still feel like they can be part of increasing their voice when we are asking for student voice to be heard in our process. And I am going to pass it along to Dr. Baker, who will showcase one of the big highlights of our student voice.
Thank you, team. So this is just a really nice opportunity this year to engage with more than 300 students across every high school campus, building on what we heard in our, in our thought exchange and other data around student voice. So first of all, I want to give credit to a former student of ours who's now at Dartmouth. She graduated from Wilson, she is the person who gave the name, Raising Student Voices and Participation, the first year of my superintendent advisory. So I always want to call Maya into the space and remind all of us, including myself, where that name came from. This year, as we implemented the new poll survey that is around sense of identity, sense of belonging, and student agency, was an opportunity for me to learn from students about what was working for them at their schools in relation to those three areas, what they wanted more of, and what some of, or less of, and what some of the trends were across the district. And so, and I, it's wonderful that we'll have Frania, who can speak to the experience that she had at Jordan with about 20 of her peers. But at every, at every high school, I had an opportunity to do But at every, at every high school, I had an opportunity to do a couple of things, to review the high school poll survey data with students. So actually looking at their most recent data report, and asking them to talk through things that were supportive of them, other challenges that they were having, and ways that they wanted their school to improve their sense of identity, agency, and sense of belonging. In addition, the team that is here, that is collecting data for portraits, in many cases came alongside me and collected additional data from students about the graduate portrait and the adult portrait, and what they want to see in those around them. We cast the question in a way that was thinking about adults at their school that have made a difference in their lives. And when we think about building professional learning, hiring practices, and all of the things that we think about as a district administration, what can students, what can students provide us in terms of their, their specific needs and the ways that they, they see support happening at their school? And so this elevated those three things, identity, sense of belonging, and agency for them, as well as thinking about the student portrait and graduate portrait. The result of it is something that, there's been data collection along the way. All schools received a report that they can use with their ASBs, with their, their clubs, with other students that make, that support decisions at, at school site council. They can look at that report with other students, with teachers, with counselors, and with principals. And then we're working now on a summary report because, Jordan, we had the last lunch visit right before the break, and so Mr. Suarez and I are working on a summary report that will allow me to share what I've learned from students with all students and with the high school principals, so that they can think about what this would look like for them to run at their school, perhaps with a group of teachers, administrators, listening in to students talk about continuous improvement relative to the work at their school. So it was a, it has been a wonderful journey for me to interact with so many students and to really hear their perspective. And at every single visit, and I know several of you attended different visits, there was something that was a mic drop moment in terms of what students would share. And oftentimes, as adults, we bring in an idea, like we're talking about data, and then we hear Frania say, well, here's how a student thinks about that data. The same was true in my high school visits, that I might come in and holding a lot of curiosity and ask students, let's talk about question five. It looks like it, students are scoring that low in terms of sense of belonging, but what I would hear is a, is a multi-dimensional story, that just the data alone doesn't tell you the whole story. And when we get students talking about their needs and how they experience school, there's more to it in many cases than just a data point. And so this is a way that we've elevated student voice, and I'm bringing data back to this team to integrate into the work of building this version of an LCAP, and to influence our Learning Acceleration and Support Plan. So I'd love for Frania, if you want to take just a moment, share something about the lunch visit at Jordan, and how, either how you observed students experiencing that, or what you remember students talking about that the board might like to know about.
All right. I don't really remember much. It was two weeks ago, but I'll try. I do remember how the students here, they all were involved in at least like two things inside of the school, like whether it's a club or some other outside sort of involvement, involvement, yeah. Especially the students that I kind of selected to come with a lunch with us, they provided insight on how they feel under school regarding the graphs that were shown to us, the data from. Yeah, the poll survey, I'm sorry. Many were chiming in, telling their personal experiences and interpretations of the data. Like, for example, one of them was, one of the questions was, do your classmates, do you feel respect in your school? And all of that really varied because the data, the way it was set, it was really like robust, I guess. And then it got too specific, and we started seeing more of an alternating data because of the broader, and also narrower, narrower range of how the data is applied. Like, for example, I'm trying to recall the first question. It was really wide, in the sense like it applies to most students. And then as we kept going, it kept getting specific. I guess another was probably how easy it is to get along with other students. And that really depended on the type of person that is being asked that question. Like, for example, myself, being involved a lot, it's been not that hard to really communicate and connect with my community, but another person who's not involved, or has no motivation to actually get involved, they're gonna say something different. They're gonna say, no, I disagree, or I feel this way, instead of like me being really involved, having that broader perspective with more students.
Thank you for sharing that perspective. I also want to give credit to students at every school, because they were given a guideline for how to select peers to come to the lunch experience for discussion. And there were students from all different clubs, many of whom actually shared that they had never been invited to something like this, and were having an experience for the first time because other students chose them to come and share their perspective. So thank you, thanks for sharing.
Something else. At the very end, what stood out to me was, I think, the extra comments that were asked, like students to comment on things that they would like to see or, or feel, and they were getting passionate. I was like, wow, they're, they're actually putting their two cents in saying it like that. Especially myself, I commented on my experience as a transitioning eighth grader to my freshman year, and it felt nice to share my experience and also troubles that we have that Dr. Baker and Mr. Suarez haven't thought about. I wish I had the graphs or like actual recording of what actually went down to really talk about it, because it was really impressive, the participation that we had. We truly had the best group of students possible from Jordan, and I hope this helps really well for future.
Thank you, Dr. Baker, and student board member. I just wanted to add one last thing around our, raising our student voices. During Vision 2035, Prospect Studios that we've been working and partnering with said we were their first district that worked on where students led their engagement sessions. This was something that the students asked us to do. I have a very vivid memory with some of the students at Milliken, is that they specifically chose classes where students often don't get heard. And actually, there was like two young men that wanted to lead it, but they were going to speak in front of all women, young women of color, and they actually then asked me and somebody else to come in to kind of like support them and do it, because they were like, I don't think we could build trust. That level of kind of awareness, ability to step back as leaders, I think that was just a very unique experience that I personally thought was just very unique and also incredible part of Long Beach, that I'm just, it's been just a really incredible process that, you know, thanks to everyone here for allowing us to kind of lead in this way, and saying, yes, we value student voices, and this is how we, we can do it and trust our students. And so we know we have a long way to go. We still have not touched every student, and the goal is to really bring a sense of belonging and agency for them. And I think that this process, especially just having this engagement component and getting their thoughts as a first step from twenty, year 21, was, it's been kind of a long, like a short, but a long journey of great improvements. And so I just wanted to share that last piece before I hand it over to George Sei.
Hey, happy Monday. Another theme that emerged, sorry, was I too chipper? Okay. Another thing that emerged. All right, so we have, as you can see here from the thought exchanges, that support for our English learners was another theme that emerged. In our visioning as well, you can see for the graduate portrait, that they wanted graduates who could effectively communicate. They wanted adults who would be able to be inclusive and address individual needs. And then for the systems, they wanted one that promotes competency in the core content and in critical thinking. So with that, the district has the Quality Core Instruction and Supporting and Monitoring English Learner Progress as their goals and priorities here. What does that look like in terms of programs and services? So here are some to highlight. We've got the Multilingual Office, which has been concentrating its efforts on training teachers and coaching sites on ways to best address multilingual learner, learner needs. We've got our Interpretation and Translation Unit that continues to provide parents access to engage in their children's education. And one thing that we were really excited about last year that we shared with you was Elevation. So here to talk about that, we've got our Office of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development Director, Ms. Angie Gonzalez, who can provide you developments on this newly implemented platform.
Hello, good evening. Temporary member of the very exclusive BEAT team. My membership expires at midnight, so let's get moving. So as George shared, Elevation is a platform that we made an investment through LCAP this year. And I want to share a couple of things about Elevation. One, the first is that we have moved reclassification, I think I shared that with you last time, we moved the whole reclassification process to the Elevation platform. So prior to moving it to Elevation, the process was really a paper-chasing process. Sites received an envelope filled with, with documents that included teacher forms, parent guardian signature forms, reclassification forms, and as you can imagine, some of those forms just disappeared. So the site then had to take those forms to the teacher, gather input from the teacher, collect the forms, set up and schedule a parent guardian meeting, and then take those forms and document it in synergy. So after moving to Elevation, we've eliminated all the paper chasing. And what remains, though, is that oh-so-important parent consultation, and I like to say consultation and celebration of reclassification. Didn't mean to rhyme there, but so all of it happens within Elevation except for that celebration piece. So what have we, what have we found? We launched it, we were a little nervous, but we launched it this winter. We trained everyone we needed to train, all people responsible for the reclassification process were trained. And we launched it with, what is that number? 596 eligible students through the first round. We reclassify in several rounds. As data comes, becomes available, students become eligible, and so we reclassify as soon as they are eligible, which is usually through three rounds. Through the reclassification process, we're able to quickly pull up data by grade level to determine how many have actually been, have completed the reclassification process. So you can see here that 93% were reclassified successfully through the first two rounds, which we included in one, in one goabout in the winter. So you're probably wondering, well, how does that compare to last year? So last year, we reclassified just short of 500 students in all rounds completed. So we're already ahead of that. Now, last year, we weren't really able to track down, well, why weren't students reclassified? Was it because the teacher didn't recommend it, because the parents didn't come and sign? We now can pull up all that data, and I don't, I didn't pull up that chart for you, but we can actually pull up the data to find out where in the reclassification process they are, so that we can intervene. And that's what we've been doing between the Research Office and the Multilingual Office, they've been intervening with all of the schools on a case-by-case basis. So every single student that you see has not been completed, we are following up with the sites and supporting them through that. I will tell you that most of them are in the phase of, of the parent consultation, so that's the only thing that is pending. All right? So that is reclassification. Before we went off to break, we launched another process in Elevation, and that's our FET monitoring. So as you are, should, you are most aware, that after we reclassify a student, we are to monitor them for four years. And so every year, we complete an R FET monitoring form, and that is also moving to Elevation. So this year, we have almost 4,000 students that fall under the monitoring category. And with just a couple of weeks' launch, we're already completed 1,300 of them. So that's pretty exciting that people are finding it quite easy, and it is, didn't really require us to be so nervous. So Elevation, you've heard me say, has two different platforms. The first platform was the Data Platform, which is where all the E L Program Management happens. So that's where we, we take care of reclassification, where we have data, where we are FET monitor. The second function is the Activities Dashboard. This is a teacher tool bank of strategies to support teachers with planning for increased language use, integrated and designated DLD. So we call those activities. And we're able to pull up some data in Elevation, and the good news is, all sites are accessing the activities. So every single school site logs in and accesses. It's pretty even across levels. Elementary, middle, and high school, we're finding pretty much even access. We're looking at the data in three different ways. One is how many activities were actually viewed? So how many times did a teacher click on an activity that then helps them plan? That's activities viewed, and that's the very top line, the blue line. Then we look at the data, so beyond just viewing, did they actually download the planning materials? So that's the second set of data, and that's the orange. Elevation also creates collections that are based, grade level-based and content-based. So if I teach 11th grade US history, I can click in 11th grade US history and the domain of language that I want to, I want to highlight in my lesson, and it'll take me to a collection, a collection just for that, those, that criteria. So that's a little bit less accessed. We haven't really highlighted collections a whole lot in our trainings, but still, we think we're pretty impressed with, with our activity usage. We have power users across the district, so we can really see what schools are accessing it, and so we'll be sending out kudos to those power users. So that's what we've got for you on Elevation. So I will pass it over to Carmen.
Okay, let's bring this home and get us home. So thank you so much, Angie, for going over that, and Dr. Baker, and our student board member. This is a reminder to our board of where we are on our timeline, and so these are the remaining meetings of the fiscal year, and how our team will continue to update the board and the community at each meeting. We'll continue to highlight how the engagement process has connected to programs and services in various budgets, including the LCAP, when we return on May 17th, so diving deeper the way that we did today. And we'll use the framework or visual shared in the previous slides to make these connections. And we continue to encourage you to visit LBSchools.net/LCAP in addition to the feedback opportunities that will be presented that Dr. Salazar mentioned on Thursday and Saturday. We'll also be issuing the first draft of the LCAP on May 3rd, and so as a reminder to our community, the state mandates a final budget approval before July of each year, which includes a public hearing. And the public hearing is scheduled for June 7th, and final approval of the 2023-24 Budget and 2023-24 LCAP is scheduled for June 21st. So we look forward to providing updates about the budget process throughout the rest of the school year. And so in closing, the Budget Engagement and Alignment Team, BEAT, continues to work together and center our community's voice to improve how we invest in our students, especially as their needs have rapidly evolved during the past three years. We greatly appreciate our internal and external educational partners for continuing to work alongside us, sharing their thoughts, and collaboration through guiding coalitions and many engagement sessions. And by deepening our engagement with our community, we strive for the excellence and equity that our students deserve. Thank you for your time, and I'll invite the team up if there are any questions.
Colleagues, do we have questions?
Colleagues, do we have questions? No. Thank you so much. I appreciate the whole musical undertones with the beat, and it's all about the bass and all that kind of stuff. Keeps it engaging, as it were, in the fourth hour of the meeting. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have item number...oh, oh, yes. 15.2, connecting...no, okay. 16.1. So Dr. Baker.
Thank you. This is an information-only item, accepting the Williams Quarterly Report for the third quarter, during which there were no complaints.
Well, that sure makes that easy. Now we are on to new business, 17.1, Approval of Resolution 041723-A, State Seal of Civic Engagement. And I will turn it over to Dr. Kristi Kael.
All right. I would like to introduce Alan Shepard. He is our History, Social Science, Ethnic Studies Curriculum Leader. And he is excited to share with you, and any students and parents who may be watching, information about the new State Seal of Civic Engagement. This is a new opportunity to recognize our graduates this year, who are well on their way to being informed and active citizens in our democracy. I'll turn it over to you, Alan.
Thank you. So good evening, Board Members and Senior Team. I appreciate this opportunity to share this excitement, this new award that we're able to develop and share with our students. The excitement that Dr. Kael was really helping me to express is something that we've already witnessed here, and we have a Student Board Member as well. These are, student voices is really critical, and highlighting student voices is really important as well. So we want to award when students are becoming engaged in their civic duties and expressing their civic-mindedness. So in 2020, the State Board of Education adopted criteria and guidance to award a State Seal of Civic Engagement to California students. And tonight, you're going to be voting on our very own resolution to grant that award locally here in Long Beach Unified School District. This award is to recognize students who are participating in, are knowledgeable about our democracy. It's to encourage students in elementary and secondary schools to become civically engaged. And it's also a seal, a sticker, that will be affixed to their diploma or their certificate of completion upon earning that award. So, well, what is it? Civic engagement is more than just voting. It requires knowledge and skills which are taught and developed over the course of time, in the classroom and outside of the classroom. It also supports our constitutional democracy, which requires informed and, most critically, active citizens. I'm going to read a little bit from the state framework about civics to help further define what civics education is. Civics is not limited to the study of politics and society. It encompasses participation in the classroom and schools, neighborhoods, groups, and organizations. Civics enables students not only to study how others participate, but also to practice participating and taking informed action themselves. The last part is really key. So how do students work their way to earn this award? Really, this is broken down into five criteria areas. The first criteria is making progress towards their graduation achievement or their certificate of completion. Second is to be civically minded by completing the History, Social Science, and Other Pathway curriculum that aligns to this work. Also, to participate in a civic engagement project. This is the part where they really take informed action. The next is demonstrating civic knowledge and skills and dispositions through self-reflection. Also, the ongoing civic-mindedness, so it's not just a one-off event, not just a one-off project, but something that is formed in a commitment towards civic engagement. So what is the timeline? We're doing a soft launch right now. We've already started waves of communications to our teachers, our principals, as well as our students themselves. We're going to continue with those waves of communication so students know, seniors specifically, that they're going to be able to apply and submit their applications. And then in the 23-24 school year, we're going to open it up to all students so that students, beginning at ninth grade, can really start to plan for the achievement of earning this award. They can think about what type of projects that they're interested in, and also what projects align with their pathway of choice. And the application process is, we hope to make it as simple as possible, and it's available now on our newly revised and revamped website. You can click through the navigation to find the History Curriculum Office, and there's a sub-page for it. Or you can just search for State Seal of Civic Engagement on our website, and it pops up first. Are there any questions?
Do we have any questions? We do? Okay. Dr. Benitez.
This is fantastic. Question one is, are there any thoughts of bringing back a version of what we used to have as a service learning requirement for students?
I can't speak about bringing back service learning. This award is really a component of a student showcasing what they know about civics. That's state as well as federal democracy and election systems. But it's also, more importantly, about engagement. And that engagement is not necessarily in a career pathway. It could be what our Student Board Member is doing now. It could be what our students did earlier during public comment as a part of their civic engagement, or it could be part of something they're doing in their classroom and also locally in the community.
So is that a maybe? Is that a...we're thinking about it?
Let's not put Mr. Shepard on the spot.
Right. But it's a civic engagement project that addresses real-world problems, takes action to seek solutions. That sounds reflection as part of service learning.
Definitely.
So we got a hit. Okay, okay. So related to this, is there any connection to, or interest, I should say, in connecting to our Seal of Biliteracy area of work, given that multilingualism, multiculturalism, global citizenship, democracy, engagement are so closely tied to each other?
There are two different awards that students could earn both, and they have different criteria for either of the two awards. What I would say also is that if a student is interested in becoming civically engaged in the attributes and aspects of the Seal of Biliteracy, that can be part of their project, and they can reflect on it. That could become a civic engagement moment that that student builds too, just like any other civically-minded student could build towards a project that they're passionate about.
So is that a maybe, potentially, Mr. Shep...come on, Mr. Shepard. Second to the last page, las solicitudes están abiertas in Spanish, highlighting the Seal of Civic Engagement. So it's a natural, Dr. Kael. Angie? I'm not trying to push it. I'm just trying to get, you know, what's our thinking on leveraging that we have these wonderful experiences, opportunities, and their concrete seals here? I mean, they graduate with these things. I've asked the question, Dr. Commander, you know, about what's the status of service learning? It seems like there's a natural opportunity, not to build something new, right, but to draw on those things that we've already committed to. So I'm just giving you a hard time, Mr. Shepard. I love this so much that I want to see the opportunities that we can leverage to make this happen.
Absolutely. I would love to see students earn both of these awards.
There we go.
I'll speak to Seal of Biliteracy for a minute. Where here for civic engagement, we were allowed a lot of flexibility in the criteria. There's less flexibility in the Seal of Biliteracy. The state has really made that. Now, there is a bill on the floor that is giving us a little bit more flexibility for how a student can prove their literacy in English. So we're hoping for that flexibility so that we can get those numbers higher in Seal of Biliteracy. But the requirements are a little bit tighter for that than for this.
And part of what I hear you saying, too, is like the natural opportunity. If you're getting the Seal of Biliteracy to say, how might you engage in the community and get a second seal? So looking for, just maximizing opportunities when we roll out the different seals so that students have access to as many as they'd like.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. I'm hearing, Mr. Shepard, that Dr. Baker just signed off on this great idea.
All right.
But no pressure. But no pressure.
It's a natural alignment.
That's true. Mr. Miller.
I, too, am also very excited about this opportunity for our students. I think that planting the seed of democracy and engagement in our democracy at a young age for our students is going to be an opportunity that, in all honesty, especially in our communities of color, that is often overlooked and devalued. And so to make this a part of our district and what we represent, I think is going to be just really cool. I mean, I don't know of a better way to put it. The one piece that we must consider when we're talking about civic engagement or being involved in our democratic passions is that I've always been a firm believer of doing it responsibly, doing it with care and with empathy. And so when I think about this space in particular, I can't help but be brought back to the time period of George Floyd. And there were a lot of young people in the streets who were passionate about the injustices that they saw and felt internal fire about being engaged civically in some way, shape, or form. Unfortunately, there were also some people who were irresponsible during that time period or took advantage of that time period. So when I, so when we talk about this opportunity for civic engagement, obviously, we're going into this with the expectation that there is responsible behavior by our students in particular and folks that they would be listening to during this process. But I would be remiss if I didn't recognize that there will be an important component of our role to, and I don't want to use the word govern, but support responsible behavior in this process, as I think that it is very easy to misconstrue civic engagement to just behavior that isn't incumbent upon the true cause that you want to represent. And so that's just something that I just wanted to make sure was stated.
Thank you. Yeah. We'll follow the lead of John Lewis with Good Trouble.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
I just have a quick question. I think this is great, by the way. But who will determine if they meet the criteria?
I'm so glad you asked. Yeah, so students will be submitting, if they are interested in earning this award, submitting their applications to our office. And then we're looking to review those internally and bringing in some teams of teachers to calibrate and figure out what is best and what type of projects students are doing out in the field and bringing in some of their voices as well.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions or comments? Thank you very much. Nice to have you. And this is a wonderful new opportunity for our kids.
Agreed. Thank you.
Okay, next we...
This is an action item, actually. I don't think you voted yet.
Yes.
It was also wonderful, and we're just basking in the wonder of it all. Okay, so action item means we need a motion.
I move to approve the new Seal of Civic Engagement with...oh, I'll leave it at that. Proposed seal.
It's actually the resolution you're approving.
There you go. That's very closely aligned to our work in Seal of Biliteracy.
And I second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Our Student Board Member?
Huh? Oh, yeah. Aye.
Excellent.
Did we vote right now?
We did. We voted.
Aye.
I'm going to say that passed 5-0, and we even had our Student Board Member's approval, so even better.
4-0.
4-0. Darn it. Darn it. I need, it takes a village, and that's what's happening tonight, just taking a village. Okay, so next, in new business, we have 17.2, Approval of Resolution 041723-B, Governing Bylaws of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Mr. Miranda, I'm going to call you up to the podium so you can get us started, and hopefully I won't forget this is also an action item.
I'll provide a little background. I just promised, Susan Ginder, I'd be brief. So in terms of a little context, local school bonds that are conducted in pursuance to Prop 39 are required to adhere to very strict guidelines, and specifically guidelines with respect to accounting and transparency of these expenditures. So Prop 39 really sets forth the requirements of this oversight. It then calls out Ed Code Section 15278 of California Ed Code, which specifically spells out, and I'll just keep it very high level, really spells out the role and responsibility of citizens oversight committees, spells out the composition of these type of committees. And we've had this in place for several years, right? So dating back to the passage of Measure K in 2008, we then had a subsequent amendment of the bylaws in 2016 with the passage of Measure E. And now we're before the Board with this resolution because we're looking for one final amendment to those very bylaws to incorporate accounting and oversight of Measure Q funds. So really, with respect to the language change in the bylaws that we're proposing via the resolution, it's really just for oversight of Measure Q expenditures. Everything else would remain the same.
So I need a motion.
Move to approve.
Discussion.
Any clarification? In reading this document, it appears, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we're bringing Measures E, K, and Q and bringing it together here? Or am I incorrect?
Yes. So currently, our Citizens Oversight Committee oversees expenditures for K and E, so that's already in place. This would add on the Measure Q expenditures. So basically, one oversight committee would have oversight of bond expenditures for all three bond measures.
And the committee would be comprised of seven individuals?
Yeah, seven individuals. And those specific roles are called out in Ed Code, so I'll name a few of them. It's a business member in the community, a couple of parents who reside within the Long Beach Unified Boundary, a member of a bona fide taxpayer organization, and a couple at-large representatives as well. And then I failed to mention a senior citizen organization representative.
And how can community members apply to be on the committee? And then would the Board and the superintendent or a combination of both then select those members to be in the committee?
Correct. So, and I'm glad this came up right now because this is a good plug for us as a district as we're going to be looking to fill three seats on the Citizens Oversight Committee. So if you recall, perhaps last Board Meeting, Walter Larkins, the Chair of our committee, presented the annual report to the Board, and he mentioned that he's coming up on the end of his term next month. So he'll preside over the committee meeting in May, and then his term runs out. His specific seat is the business... His specific seat is the business member representative for the committee, so we'll be looking to fill that seat. Two of our additional members on the COC also have their terms expiring this fall. So they'll preside over their last committee meeting in September, and then we'll be looking to fill those two seats. One of them is that member of a taxpayer organization, and the last one is an at-large member. We'll be looking at posting the recruitment, opening the official recruitment via our bond website relatively soon, I'm hoping this week. So if you hear from folks that are interested, I'd say definitely refer them to our LB SchoolBonds.net website. There's a specific link to the COC webpage, and that's where we'll post our recruitment, the application. We typically do a screening internally, and then, yes, that recommendation is brought forth for board approval.
And can I ask? So there's two members that would serve for one year. Am I correct? And not for two? Can I ask?
Yeah, so that part is a little tricky, so I'm glad you called out that one for reference as well. Because that's really at the outset, you know, when we first start a citizens oversight committee. Now it's in full swing. So at this point, members are appointed to two-year terms, and they can only serve up to three consecutive terms. So for those members whose terms I just referenced are expiring, they're up against that total six-year mark, basically. They've served their full two-year terms three times over, right?
Okay. So just for clarification, there'd be two years.
So it would be a two-year term.
Okay.
Yes. For every member we bring on from this point forward, it's two-year terms. And that's really just meant initially, you know, at the outset of the committee establishment, so there's overlap. So we don't have a turnover of seven members, but right now we have that already in swing.
Okay. I have a lot of questions. And then what is the timeframe between when there's a vacancy and when that position is filled?
It depends. So it's just a mixed bag in terms of how much interest there is. So there's been years where we get upwards of half a dozen applicants putting in for the committee to serve on the committee. There's other times where we have one or two, right? So in those cases, where we try our best to recruit even more, just have a good selection process, and it can take us a few more months to fill that vacancy. We've gone, on a few occasions, we've gone with six members on the committee as we're trying to fill a vacancy as well.
Okay. And then I don't know if this is, so this is a more legal question, but what the rationale is for meeting just at least once a year and more than quarterly versus more regularly so that we have more feedback from the community, from those committees?
Yeah, and it's called out in Ed Code, so they specifically call it out. I know from experience, it's difficult to get volunteers to commit to that specific committee for more than the four times. I'll note that for Long Beach Unified, we also send them additional information outside of the four regular meetings. So there's a specific time period in the year, it's October, where we send them financials. So there's no formal meeting, per se, like that fifth time, but we send them additional information for consideration as well.
But is there room for, to meet more regularly?
The Ed Code, the 15278, and the statutes that come right after it, let me double-check. I think there is in the statute, but let me double-check and let you know that for sure.
Okay. And then one last thing is, the annual report is presented in writing, but can it also be presented here for the public to get that, you know, that report?
Yeah, so that report is presented on an annual basis. Walter typically does a little spiel just summarizing the report, but it's also attached to our board agenda at that specific meeting. And it's also posted on the LB School Bonds website. That's another requirement of Ed Code, that we post every annual report.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay. Any further questions or...
A little poll for this one.
Sure.
All right. I'll have the board secretary take the vote.
Thank you. Member Benitez?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member Lopez, preferential vote?
Aye.
So that passes 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. We are at Report of Board Members, so it's Report and Announcements. So we will start with our student board member, Frania.
This time around, I have no comments. Oh, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Miller.
All right. I'm definitely going to be brief today. First, there's been a group of parents working at Lafayette centered around safe travel. And so I just was very much appreciative of their efforts, and so I just wanted to highlight and thank them for supporting our families over there at Lafayette in particular. This weekend, we had the Grand Prix, and I haven't had the opportunity to participate in a while, but I was able to go this year, and I was just really impressed with how well our city put together this year's event. So I just wanted to send a big shout-out to our newly-elected mayor for a great event and the Downtown Business Alliance for their, Long Beach, Downtown Long Beach Business Alliance for their great work in putting on a fantastic event this weekend because it was definitely a lot of fun. And then last but not least, in, at Long Beach City College this weekend, The Six will be hosting a financial literacy event, which I wish that I would have been a little bit more astute when it came to financial literacy as a young man. But, and I think that at times, when you have these big aspirations, you don't recognize the importance of money management and the tools to help you be financially successful, or the need for them, for that matter. I think that all of us had dreams of hitting the Lotto or starting some multi-billion-dollar business and et cetera. But the thing where it starts is how to balance a checkbook, right? How to purchase your first home? How to, the importance of doing your taxes, et cetera. And so this series of workshops hosted by The Six, which is a great organization, I've been able to partner with them on a number of projects, is really centered around helping predominantly families of color with their financial literacy. And so you can sign up at thesixlbfinance eventbrite.com. And like I said, it's this weekend, should be a really good event. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez.
Yeah, just, I'll be short, too. So as the team was sharing a summary of our budget engagement process and the connection to our budgeted programming and community voice, it made me think of times when either Dr. Baker and/or Dr. T. Brown and/or Dr. Simon have shared on the investments that our district has made, whether it's our FRCs, our wellness centers. So I'm wondering, Dr. Baker, as part of this process in the next month and a half or so, if we can highlight some of those investments that have already been made, whether it be, you know, I thought about the social workers that we've hired, additional counselors, school psychologists, because I do think it's important for community members as they're providing their input and feedback to get a sense on things that we're building, things that maybe we haven't been able to do yet, and things that, you know, haven't just occurred overnight, right? And so I do know that in the last four or five years, we've made some very concrete investments in those areas that are highlighted and outlined, whether it's through our system portrait and our specific community voice that's lifting up the need for more social and emotional well-being and social and emotional learning. That's my report today.
Ms. Lopez?
Well, I had the opportunity to visit Longfellow and Grant Elementary Schools, and my visit to both of the schools were just incredibly rewarding. I had the opportunity to walk around the campus, I visited classrooms. I'd also learned about the programs at the school, and I was super impressed by the quality of the work that the students are producing. And so I just wanted to send kudos to the principals for their great leadership and to the teachers at both of the schools for their exceptional work. And then I just want to remind the community of the importance of attending Division 2035 meetings on Thursday and Saturday. Community members, your feedback is needed in order to ensure that your voices are reflected in the direction LBUSD takes in the near future. And then finally, I'd just like to congratulate all of the seniors who were admitted to four-year colleges or to the programs of their choice. Wherever you are, students, if you're listening, your hard work has finally paid off. And of course, that's not possible without the support of their parents and their teachers. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll forego my report and just get to my announcements. There is a Long Beach Council PTA Reflections Reception a week from tonight at the Grand, so that's Monday, April 24th at 6:00 p.m. And then there is a car show at McBride Saturday, April 22nd. You can check McBrideCarShow.com for details. You can also register to show your car, if you have a show-worthy car. Also, it is Public Schools Volunteer Week, so I encourage everyone to try volunteering in our schools because that's very rewarding as well. And then finally, we launched our new website, so everybody, please check out the new website. And there's an opportunity to give feedback on what you liked about it, what you didn't like about it. So please check out the new website. So, Dr. Baker?
Thank you. So I have several things that I'd like to highlight, so I'll go quickly, but I'm not going to let any of them go because they're all important. So I'm going to build on the website. We did launch our new website, and here is some data for the community. We've had 50,000 unique visitors, about 190,000 page views from 10 different countries.
100 different countries.
From 100, thank you, from 100 different countries, yes. And just a thank you to Justin and to the team behind the scenes who have been working on the development of this website for two years. So when it comes out at the end, looking beautiful, it has been in production. Special shout-out to Darren Mashburn, who is behind the scenes, who first worked on the transfer of 84 school site websites along with the master website. So this is a really big deal, and thank you, President Craighead, for highlighting the fact that there is an opportunity for feedback. We know, and I'll include myself in this, I'm one of the visitors that's been on the website a lot, finding my way around and just reminding myself that change sometimes is hard, so keep looking if you haven't found something. But there is an opportunity for feedback for anybody that's using the website, so thank you to the entire team behind the scenes. Also want to highlight, we had students who participate in our migrant education program that recently, about a month ago, participated in a regional speech tournament. There were 25 winners, and they brought home more trophies than any other participating districts, which was really cool. Many of them participated in Spanish, but some participated in English. So we can be really proud of our students that are out there participating in speech tournaments. A special shout-out to group of Californians for Justice high school students. We have Californians for Justice chapters at a number of our schools, but recently the students at Wilson partnered with their staff. And in the way that Californians for Justice support students and being student leaders, the students actually led professional learning experience for adults. And so wonderful for the Wilson staff to try something new and to really lean into student leadership and student voice. The students led several sessions really looking at specifics around bias and racism and things that created a great opportunity for students and adults to be talking to each other in the same room and learning together. So just wonderful work there. And Sato High School this weekend won the National Drone Soccer Championship, and my understanding is they were the only district from California. Is that right? So big shout-out to Mr. Guyo, first of its kind, yeah, National Drone Soccer Championship. Yeah. Oh, and Gabriel was there, too. So partnership across those schools, and we'll look for them both to bring home trophies. So want to thank Dr. Cale and her team OCIPD, who put in hours to ensure that the CAPE Conference that was held in Long Beach was a success. Huge volunteerism running around from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. In addition, doing presentations and ensuring that the success of the conference was up to Long Beach Unified standards. And it results in many things. So immediately, Dr. Cale's team has been coordinating or partnering with Oxnard and San Diego Unified to think about how to enhance our programming from the multilingual office and looking for best practices in dual immersion, in the case of Oxnard, and some partnership opportunities in San Diego. So please thank your team on our behalf as well. Let's see. My last item is Mr. Moskowitz is taking a group of young students and older students from the student advisory, the elementary student advisory, along with students from the high school student advisory up to Camp Oaks, including students that used assistive devices, who will be there to test out Camp Oaks or Camp High Hill, at Camp Oaks, what it may become, for students who will be going in the fall. So this is a wonderful opportunity, if you want to share anything about it, but a wonderful opportunity for students to get up and actually camp in Camp Oaks and help us to troubleshoot anything that we need to know before we start to send all of our fifth graders up to Camp Oaks. Did I get it? All right. Last two announcements. We have a wonderful early childhood education symposium this Saturday, which will be held at the Renaissance Hotel. We'll have hundreds, I've heard, over 400 this year, early childhood educators from our preschools, elementary schools, and actually from areas around us that come to the conference. And then April 29th, before we're back together, we'll also have the Black Student Achievement Symposium that has both an adult strand and a student strand that will be held at Jordan High School for an all-day event. So just welcome any of you all and those who are listening to check the website for those event details if they want to attend, or our social media accounts. Oh, lastly, we have a published author among our principals. Megan Traver, principal at Stevens Middle School, published a book called State of the School, telling the story about how she, both at Washington Middle School and now at Stevens, has built the state of the school process as a way of building team, looking at their data, really interacting around the needs of their students. And it says, "Activate, empower, and inspire every member of your school community, and have fun doing it." So congratulations to Megan Traver for representing herself so beautifully, but also representing Long Beach Unified as a published author. And that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Well, that concludes the business of the meeting. Only a little after nine, our next regularly scheduled meeting is May 3rd, and I am now declaring this meeting adjourned.